Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to the special city council meeting of May 2, 2023. In the interest of government transparency with regards to deliberations and decisions made by city council and according to open meeting law, since this meeting was posted as a Zoom meeting, this meeting is recorded by video and audio and will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the city council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. If you're calling in on a phone and you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer or device, there is a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options. Non-discrimination statement opener for city council meetings reasons follows. It's the finding of the city of Gloucester that no individual should be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental mental disability, family status, immigration status, gender identity or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. I'd like to announce the members of the council that are here. My name is Val Gilman. I'm the council president and I am the Ward four city councillor. We have Scott Memard, who is our Ward one city councillor. We have Jason Grow, who is at-large city councillor. We've got Tony Gross at-large. We've got Jeff Worthley at-large. We have Frank Margiotta, who is Ward three, and we have Sean Nolan, who is our vice chair, and also our Ward five city councillor. And then we also have Tracy O'Neil. She is our Ward two city councillor. And I believe everyone is here in the council with the exception of Jamie O'Hara. So, members of staff, I would like to welcome is first of all, Joanne Sinos, our city clerk, Mayor Greg Berger. Thanks for being here, Mayor. Jill Cahill, who is our C A O. And we have Kenny Costa, who is our auditor. We have John Dunn, who is our CFO. And I believe that is it. Let me just look to make sure I didn't forget anybody. I think that's it. And we have four attendees on the call. So, there's no oral communications at tonight's special city council meeting. So I'd like to ask Madam Clerk, would you announce the first order of business?
First order of business is the mayor's proposed FY24 budget presentation to the council.
Thank you. So first of all, I'd like to thank our mayor and his administration for their efforts in the preparation of the fiscal 2024 municipal budget for the city of Gloucester in order to provide essential city services to all Gloucester residents. At this time, I would like to turn it over to our honorable Mayor Greg Berger for his presentation of the fiscal 2024 budget. Mayor, the floor is yours. Welcome.
Thank you, Council President Gilman and members of the city council. I'm happy to be here tonight to present the proposed annual budget for fiscal year 2024. And I'm proud of all we were able to accomplish last fiscal year, and I'm looking forward to building on those successes through this proposed annual budget. So the proposed 24 budget will further enable us to invest in our schools, municipal infrastructure, public safety, and essential city services to better meet the needs of our residents and our businesses. And as our community navigates these uncertain economic times, the proposed FY24 budget reflects strategic investments into our community. While remaining mindful of rising inflation, supply chain disruption, and the need for sensible spending, this budget is a clear reflection of my continued commitment to responsible fiscal management, and it exhibits a balanced, conservative, and strategic spending plan. And we must continue to practice fiscal sustainability to ensure our community is prepared to weather any short or long-term uncertainties. Gloucester's economic security relies on several factors, including the overall success of the state's economy. One key piece of this is the state's changes to the chapter 70 formula. This allowed us to increase our investment in our schools last fiscal year. And I'm happy to appropriate nearly $50 million to our Gloucester Public Schools. This is an increase of $2.75 million, and it is arguably the single largest increase to their budget. This funding will have a significant impact on our schools. And I'm a strong advocate for our amazing vocational program at the high school. These vocational classes give our students an opportunity to learn meaningful and real growth skills to start their careers and to use throughout their lives. And this new allocation will allow for a new vocational track to be supported. And I'm excited to officially announce tonight the creation of the medical assistant vocational program at G H S. So in addition to investing in our schools, I'm reaffirming my commitment to addressing Gloucester's streets. You recall last fiscal year, I increased the city's pavement budget by over 480%. And I'm maintaining that allocation in this current proposed budget for fiscal 24. And this fund is so funding will further enable the D P W to take on the larger paving projects and make critical improvements to Gloucester's roadways. Another key priority of this administration has been to increase the efficiencies throughout city government. Last fiscal year, you recall, we launched the online beach reservation system for non-resident beachgoers. This was without a doubt an incredible success and demonstrated the impact of modern technology and streamlined processes and how they can affect change across the board in a positive way. And the system dramatically reduced traffic, improved beach going experience, and it resulted in about $2 million in revenue for the city, which is right on par with some of our best years. This year, we have selected a new vendor, Blinkay, as the platform for non-resident beach parking reservations. So we've been really impressed with the new vendor, and I'm looking forward to another successful beach season. Now, our I T department has also successfully created an internal database to track the hundreds of volunteer members to our boards, committees, and commissions. And this replaces an outdated and inefficient system, reducing staff's staff time and errors. The I T staff leverages system they already had to help create this database, further saving the city money and time. And we've been incredibly busy appointing and reappointing residents to our municipal boards, commissions, and commissions, committees, and commissions. And this new system has been a major tool for our office and several other departments. Our city's dedicated staff are an integral part of our success and play an important role in delivering exceptional service to our residents and businesses. Last fiscal year, I announced the creation of the city's first full-time sustainability coordinator. And this position has brought a refreshing perspective to the city work across departments and has been instrumental in the city being awarded over $100,000 in grant funding to support their innovative work. They've led the charge connecting residents with resources to save on their energy bills while working strategically with the city staff to evaluate projects and initiatives through a sustainability and resiliency lens. And I'm proud of the work being done by our sustainability coordinator and looking forward to their continued impact on our community. Another incredible member of our city staff is our community health navigator at the Gloucesters Community Impact Unit. This department and their staff is invaluable. They provide critical support and resources to those struggling with substance use, mental health issues, and homelessness. And I'm happy to announce that we will be putting the monies received from the National Opioid Settlement to good use to fund the community health navigator position. I'll continue to strategically appropriate the nearly $23 million in coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds allocated under the American Rescue Plan Act to the city of Gloucester. After careful consideration and public, it's easy to say, public participation, I announced the following categories which will be receiving funding. Infrastructure, economic development, affordable housing, public health, community initiatives, arts and culture, general government, and parks and open spaces. This funding is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to our community, and I want to ensure it does the most good for the most people over the most time. So I took office with clear goals, transparency, efficiency, and collaboration. I'm proud of all we've accomplished, and I'm looking forward to all we will continue to achieve. And I want to thank and recognize all of our city employees, the members of the school committee, and you, the members of the city council, for your dedication and commitment to our city. It's because of our combined efforts and passion that we are able to successfully move our great community forward. So the proposed FY24 budget will further strengthen our city, and I proudly recommend its adoption. I look forward to working with you in the coming weeks to enact this proposed spending plan and our continued collaboration to serve our community. And with that, I hand it back to you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. So I would like to thank on behalf of the city council, Mayor Berger, for his remarks. And our council looks forward to working with you and your administration on crafting a blueprint for the over $100 million corporation, also known as the proposed fiscal year 2024 municipal budget for the city of Gloucester. In addition, we should remember that we also have a single line appropriation to the Gloucester Public Schools proposed at $49,738,897. Tonight, this council will vote by roll call to accept receipt of the annual budget as proposed by the mayor for its budget review that is in accordance under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 32, and pursuant to the Gloucester City Charter, Part One, Section 6-1. The city council have 45 days after the receipt of the budget to take action on the budget. The receipt of the budget will start a long and intense process for the Budget and Finance Committee comprised of Chair Scott Memard, Vice Chair Tony Gross, and City Councillor Jeff Worthley of the review of the fiscal year 2024 budget. These budget department meetings will be hybrid, meaning virtually and in person to the public, which will continue through the middle of June, and I encourage all Gloucester residents to either attend or tune in and listen. The in-person B N F meetings will be held at the Harbor Masters Office Conference Room at 19 Harbor Loop. Here's a list of some of the important dates. First of all, most importantly, is a public input and comments, and that will be heard at a Zoom public hearing on the fiscal 2024 budget at the city council meeting on Tuesday, June 6. So save the date. We only have 11 attendees on the call right now, but I'm certain lots of people will watch this meeting in Zoom. So save that date, June 6, 6 o'clock, for the public hearing on our budget. Also, some other dates to take note of. One of the popular meetings that a lot of members of the public will probably like to sit in and join us is on Wednesday, May 10. The Public Safety Department reviews will include police, fire, animal control, and emergency management. And that's from 9 to 4 o'clock. Additional department reviews will also include D P W and Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund with reviews of the rates. Tomorrow, May 3, we review the smaller departments like City Clerk, City Council, Assessor, Library, and more, and that's from 9 to 4 tomorrow. You can either zoom in or you can go and come join us at the Harbor Masters Conference Room. On Tuesday, May 30, the school department's budget will be reviewed. On Tuesday, June 13, the city council will vote our budget. Hard copies are available of the budget book, which the mayor is going to present to me through cyberspace. And we are going to have hard copies available at the city clerk's office and also at the Sawyer Free Library Temporary Venue. So if you don't have a computer and you want to take a look at the hard copy version, please do. And by midday tomorrow, on the mayor's home page at www.gloster-ma.gov, you'll find a full copy PDF of this entire budget book. So Mayor, before I turn the meeting over to Council Memard to do the vote, I'd like love you to transfer your budget book over to me.
All right, here it comes, just like on Willy Wonka. Ready?
Okay. Okay, I've got it.
The marvelous television.
It's not upside down. Anyway, thank you. It's just kind of different doing things on Zoom because it was always nice when we were in person. But anyway, thank you for this, and we'll take good care of it. So at this point in time, I'd like to turn control of the meeting over to our very responsible B N F leader, Scott Memard, who will make the motion on the receipt of this and the referral. So Council Memard, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Gilman. Again, the members of our Budget and Finance Committee include myself, at-large councillor Gross, and at-large councillor Worthley. All of our budget meetings will be council of the whole meeting so that all of our fellow councillors are invited and encouraged to join us as we go through the line-by-line items of each department in the budget review. It's my pleasure to accept the mayor's budget proposal and to move that in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 32, pursuant to the Gloucester City Charter, Part One, Section 6-1, that the city council accepts receipt of the mayor's fiscal year 2024 proposed budget and becomes the budget of the city council and to refer this budget to our Budget and Finance City Council Standing Committee for further review, and I so move.
Second.
Second. The motion was made by Council Memard, and I believe seconded by Council Grow. So we're going to have a roll call vote, and I just did get a message from Councillor O'Hara. He's having some Wi-Fi issues, so he will try to get on if he can. So at this point, roll call vote. Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara absent. Council O'Neil?
Yes.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Grow?
Yes.
Council Margiotta?
Yes.
And Council Memard?
Yes, thank you.
The yeses have it, eight in favor, one absent. Thank you very much, city staff. And you can stay for our rules and procedure if you'd like to, or you could go and have dinner with your family. So.
Oh, stay, stay, please.
Thank you all. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is the for council vote, the standing committee report of the Ordnance and Administration Standing Committee meeting of April 3, 2023, continued from April 22, 2023. And it's in regard to City Council Order 202321 Gilman to amend the Gloucester Council's Rules of Procedure 22 by amending Rule Number Two, Order of Business, Rule Number Three, Agenda Procedure, Rule Number Four, Public Hearings, Rule Number Six, Rules of Debate, Rule Number Eight, Committees, Rule Number 12, Special Permit. And also for City Council Order Number 2023022 from Councillor Gross, Amendment, City Council Rules of Procedure 2022 by amending Rule Number One, Meetings, Rule Number Three, Agenda Procedure, Rule Number Four, Public Hearings, Rule Number Eight, Committees, Rule Number Nine, Vacancy in a Council Position and filling same, Rule Number 10, Procedure for Selecting an Inter-Mayor.
Thank you. And when you're not speaking, if you could all mute yourself because we had a little bit of interference with hearing, Madam Clerk, and that would be helpful if we could all remember to do that. For the purpose, before I turn the meeting over to Council Nolan, who will take charge of the committee report, I'd like to just mention to the 11 attendees who are on the call that if you want to take a look at the standing committee meeting that where we discussed this and made the committee report, it's on the city website. If you go onto the top, onto Governance, then hit City Council, and then hit Standing Committee, and go on to Ordnance and Administration Minutes. The minutes of Monday, April 3, 2023, which are 11 pages, discuss all of our decisions on these. So I just wanted to mention that to you in case you are interested in seeing the backup to this conversation that we're having tonight. This is not a public hearing. These are just council rules of procedure. So we're happy that 11 people are listening in, and I'm sure maybe more tomorrow. So thank you. So I will let Council Nolan take over, and I know Joanne is ready to put this template up on the screen if necessary to help understand what these look like. Are you prepared to do that, Joanne? You are muted.
Sorry, I did not have that ready, but I can put the template up. I can open it on my desktop while we're going through it.
Okay, great. So Council Nolan. You have the floor. Thank you.
All right, so we have the first one for Ordnance and Administration.
Okay, and Council O'Hara, just for the record, Councillor Jamie is here. So we're starting the council orders on the rules of procedure. Welcome.
A council should have flown first class. You get free food. So we're under, yes. So we're under number one. And it's to amend the City Council Rules of Procedure by adding number three, Agenda Procedure for Public Hearings. Rule Number Six, Rules and Debates. Rule Number Eight, Committees. Rule Number 12, Special Permits. At this time, I'd like to open it up to the floor to see how people feel, if they'd like to add or support any of the agenda items that are in front of us on this order. Councillor O'Neil?
Thank you. I have a question in that this affects the public in many ways, all of these changes. I haven't, why is it not a public hearing? Because there's proponents and opponents and changing the way councillors can ask questions and not ask questions. I don't understand why it's not, all of this is not a public hearing. It affects the public quite a bit.
I believe this is for, by charter, rules of procedure are a non-public hearing and voted upon by the council. If there's anybody else that would like to chime in on that, but I believe that's the actual rules and charter and how we do this for rules of procedure. Councillor Gilman, if you want to chime in or.
No, so I would just echo that this is governance, Council O'Neil. This is governance, how we operate as a city council. We've had this out there for a month, a month and a half. If people had concerns, they've shared them with their councillors. This is not anything that's required to be a public hearing per the code of ordinances. This is our own rules of procedure. So I believe that we should continue right now, and and this is something that's a dynamic document. So at any given point, anybody can add an ordinance and amendment to this, and we can bring it up, refer it to O and A. And you know, what we approved today certainly doesn't have to be what is there in a month. So we want to do the right thing. So, Joanne, do you have the the screenshots? You can see each one. Okay, in this.
Let me just share my screen. Here we go. Okay, can you see my screen?
We can see it, and that's very helpful for us to be able to visualize this. So thank you. And what you might want to do, Council Nolan, is because this is this first matter is things that I brought up. Maybe before you open it up, when we do each motion, whether it be Council Gross or me, this part is me, I can just describe what it is, and then you can lead the conversation to open it up for more input. Is that okay with you, Council Nolan?
It is. And Council Gilman, you have the floor.
Thank you. Okay, so the first motion. It was, this is the first one, correct? Amend the City Council Rules of Procedure by amending Rule Two, Order of Business. Rule Number Three, Agenda Procedure, Rule Number Four, Public, oh, that's the whole thing. All right, so the first matter was on a motion by Council Margiotta, seconded by Council Gross. The Ordnance and Administration Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council amend the City Council Rules of Procedure 2022 as follows. Rule Two, Order of Business. The following list establishes the order of business for regularly scheduled city council meetings. It is understood that in special situations, the city clerk and the city president may rearrange the calendar in the interest of public convenience. So after number one, which was historically flag salute and moment of silence, which is optional. Number two, we'd like to add legal language for the Zoom technology in the interest of government transparency and remote participation. Number three, to add the non-discrimination statement opener for city council meetings. And then subsequent renumbering through 15 to be changed accordingly. Further, advertise public hearings. We are adding that they be noted on the bottom of every city council agenda. So items two and three are just standard business. The non-discrimination statement opener was developed by the Human Rights Commission. And we removed sections that we felt were too strong because of the recent rulings for freedom of speech. So our opener is void of that. So the discrimination statement opener that we've been reading is the accurate one. And it complies with the new Freedom of Speech ruling. And then the legal language for Zoom technology. Right now, we're doing Zoom. At some point, we're going to do hybrid Zoom, and we want to make sure that that is always there for people to understand how they can zoom in and participate. And then finally, the public hearings is something that we felt, or I felt, and I've been doing it for, since I've been council president, is that I wanted to make sure that we constantly remind people when the upcoming public hearings are. We add them in the newspapers and and they're always in the agenda, but I think it's helpful for the public to know when the public hearings are. So that's always on the agenda. So you can look forward to see what's coming up at the next meeting, maybe even the next meeting. So that is, that is my discussion, and let's open it up for other councillors. And I see right off, Council Gross has your hand raised.
I do. In the legal language, now, in another, you know, let's hope, five weeks, we're going to be meeting in person. And in the legal language you have up here now says that we will do everything by roll call vote. So I think that that's not, you know, that's not relevant as far as, you know, that goes. That can go in the remote participation piece that goes further down, but not necessarily in the opener because it's, this is more about remote participation in the audience, I would think, when we go with hybrid. So I think that, I think we need to reexamine this a little bit to make sure that it, I think it could be shortened up into basically what we read at subcommittee meetings. And so I think this just probably needs a little tightening up.
Okay, I think, so we actually modify this for us. Well, no, we don't. This is basically the standard, even when we're doing our standing committees. So so do you, are you suggesting that we not cover this right now? Because I think we need to keep it until we go to the next step, right? So we could probably continue to use this right now.
My only concern is the, you know, the major concern is the we'll be right by roll call because that hopefully will not be necessary when we're back in person. And, you know, of course, you do have to announce it's going to be recorded. That's required by law. But yeah, my main concern is the roll call piece.
Okay, so I think everyone knows that when we're in Zoom, it has to be roll call. When we're present, it needs to be, it doesn't have to be unless a member of our team is not present. So when we're typically, all of us have been at the meetings. So when we're typically, all of us have been at the meetings at the Harvard Masters Office and unless a member is of that standing committee is not present, we do not. We don't have, we, we, I think everybody knows what I'm saying at this point. But if if we're all present, we don't have to do a roll call vote. If someone is not present, but they're a member of that committee, then yes, we have to do roll call vote. Do you want to amend this right now? We could do that if you wanted to.
Madam President, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm just kind of thinking aloud, if if we are on, if we're hybrid, wouldn't the public like to hear who voted for what? In other words, if if we just say I, the public doesn't necessarily know that I voted yes and you voted no.
Right. And that's, that's something that is an option. Any counselor at any point can request a roll call vote. That's how the law works. So so if you if you were at a meeting and you felt that you wanted to be clear, you, all you would have to do is say, Madam President, I request a roll call vote and then we will call the roll. Does that help?
Well, not really. So you want to. No, I understand what you said, but I would think that the 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 public would like to hear me say no and you say yes or vice versa. So they know is, because if we all say I or if three say I and five say nay, you know, they don't know who said what.
Right, but typically, so so you can always, you can always ask. And then in the minutes, we always say who the affirmative, we we put in the minutes of the meeting when we repeat what the what the vote was. We always say who the people that didn't vote for it in the minutes. So that's part of it. So that that follows the transcription of the meeting, Counsel O'Neil. So you'll see in the minute.
Understand, yeah, I understand that. But it's just a thought that in real time, people could know. That's, that's all. But in the way this is written, people don't know, might not know in real time who voted for what. So just so that everybody knows that.
Counsel Grow.
Is there a particular reason that it needs to be known in real time if the minutes reflected, if the now, if the result of the 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 motion is is clearly articulated, it just seems to me, part of, part of one of the things about not doing roll call votes is that, you know, it it adds a fair amount of time every time we have to do a roll call vote for everything through our meetings. And if if, you know, I would be perfectly comfortable if I wasn't sure who voted with what, what way to call for roll call vote. But, you know, if we don't need to do it, and most, so many of our votes are unanimous anyway. You know, in the, in the, they are, they're, if you look at the record, I think, Tracy, that you'd see that most of the the votes that we take are generally pretty, pretty close to being unanimous. But we're, this is, this is a new thing that came about as a result of Zoom technology and for literally dozens and dozens, if not scores, if not hundreds of years, people have done ayes and nays and managed to make it through.
I'm just voicing my opinion, that's all.
No, it's fair.
Thank you, Counsel Worthley.
Yes, so I shared Counsel O'Neil's concern, but I also agree with Counsel Gross that it's probably ninety-five percent of our votes that are unanimous, like our motion to reconsider for immediate, immediate reconsideration. That's typically unanimous. And I think anytime there's a dissenting voice, either that's really known, because you've testified on that, or that person can make a note to say, I'd like to have that roll call. So that's really clear. But really, it's a, it's a time efficiency thing. If we have to call roll call and everything is unanimous, referral to committee consent agenda. We're talking about, I I think we would probably save an hour of the public's time if we were to not have a roll call on especially all those unanimous votes. So I would be happy to support this.
Thank you, Counsel. Anyone else like to speak on this? Counsel Gross.
If I can suggest that we just eliminate that one sentence that starts with additional and ends with roll call vote, because it's covered under remote participation, further on down, it's covered under open meeting law also. So I don't think we need to have that in there since we're soon to be meeting in, you know, in person and already at subcommittee, we don't. So I think that that just taking out that sentence will neither affect Counselor's ability to ask for a roll call vote, nor really affect the you know, it's pretty apparent who voted on the dissenting side, whether it's an affirmative or in the negative, who those people were that voted in the minority. So I usually know pretty easily about who who voted where. And like you said, it's in the minutes. Big important issues are in the newspaper on who voted on what. So I don't think that that's really a big issue. And as Jason said, you know, for the last since, you know, town meetings have been around since the seventeen hundreds, sixteen hundreds. This is how, it's always been done, the yays and nays way. So I think that it's the, 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 anyway, it's, I don't think it's necessary to have the roll call vote into this particular piece.
Okay, do you want to do you want to amend it?
I amend that we take out the sentence that says additionally, all votes taken by city council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote.
I'll second it. Motion made by Counsel Gross, seconded by Gilman. Is there a discussion on the amendment?
Makes sense to me. This is Scott speaking.
Okay, anyone else? So we'll do a roll call vote.
Um, Bow, can I was the motion seconded? Because I didn't hear Sean read the motion. You read the motion.
There's a motion to amend.
I know, but the main motion.
Oh, yeah, it was seconded, I seconded.
It was Jason, yeah.
Okay, I didn't hear that, sorry.
It was, it was seconded by Counsel Gilman reading the motion for her statement to the floor.
Thank you. Okay, so on the, on the amendment, Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neil.
You muted.
No.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Mammard.
Yes.
The yeses have it, eight in favor, one opposed. Counsel O'Neil. Um, so back to the main motion. There's a motion that's been made. Been seconded. Any further discussion?
Just a question.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes, just so I'm clear, this is only on the legal language for Zoom technology, the nondiscrimination statement and the numbering, right? That's in the list of the agenda items, the upcoming meetings. That's what we're voting on right now, right? Not the other.
That is correct. We, we, you were in O and A that day and we made a million different motions because we wanted to be clear, because everything had a different theme and we thought that that was the best way to go.
Yep, I should make sure I'm, I know we're voting, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion, counselors? Seeing none, roll call vote. Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neil.
No.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Mammard.
Yes.
The yeses have it, eight in favor, one oppose. Counsel O'Neil. Okay, Counsel Nolan, do you want to continue with the the committee recommendation?
I will. There was on a motion of Counsel Majota, seconded by Counsel Gross. The ordinance and administration committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed to recommend the city council amend the city council rules of procedure two thousand and twenty-two as follows. Counsel Gross, you could have the floor, but please don't read the amendment.
This was a this is Gilman.
Yeah, this gets bells.
Sorry. So what I was trying to do here is is give the opponents as much opportunity as the people in favor. And so in the spirit of balancing that opportunity, I was asking under D to add that it's the responsibility of opponents to select a spokesperson and notify the council president and city clerk prior to the public hearing. And then also, the next statement says opponents are also required under open meeting law to enter into the record documentation of their testimony. And then, and then the suggestion is to add for public hearings, considering general matters, each individual may speak up to three minutes. Basically, what that's talking about is for GCO rather than special council permits. So that's basically how that works. So and then under F, communications to be read into the record and filed to add for matters received seventy-two hours prior to the date in the time of the advertised public hearing. And then under G, questions by city counselors to either side to add to city administration. The council president may require set time allotments for questions based on the meeting agenda. The allowance should include the asking of the question only, not the answer provided by the other side or city administration. And the reason for that is that we want to, we want to make sure that we fairly share the floor of everybody. So there was a counselor or two that were feeling that I was cutting them off because I kept saying share the floor. And this is a way that we thought was, I thought was more fair, because everybody gets the same amount of time. And and it also helps us stay to the agenda, because sometimes people might ask a question with a little bit of a presentation of what it is they're going to ask and why. And in the spirit of time, when we have eight or ten public hearings, it's really helpful that we can move the question quickly, because then we can have more time to to discuss it at the, after the public hearing is closed and not be in a hurry, because we want to make sure that we're giving all these important city matters of the amount of time. And I think, I think for the most, this was very supported at O and A. At least that was my recollection. And I hope you consider these. So open the floor for discussion. Counsel Worthley.
Thank you.
Should we put the motion on the floor first, on the table first, in turn?
I think Counsel Nolan made the motion.
Yes, well, it said as follows, but it didn't say the whole motion.
Oh. Yikes. Counsel Worthley is right. Counsel Nolan, do you, do you mind going through this whole thing and doing the ads and the deletes? I know it's a lot of work. Sorry. Thank you.
Oh, well, you just, you did a really good job reading the first motion, so I figured maybe you want to do this one too, but that's fine. So we'll start with the rule four, public hearings. C, presentation. From proponents in matters related to special permits, petitioners may make initial oral presentations up to fifteen minutes. Others speaking in favor shall be allowed up to three minutes each. Proponents are required on open meeting law to enter into the record documentation of their presentation and testimony. For public hearings, considering general matters, each individual may speak up to three minutes. D, presentation from opponents. Opponents shall be allowed initial orial, oral presentations up to fifteen minutes. Other speakers in opposition shall be allowed up to three minutes each. Add, it is the responsibility of the opponents to to select a spokesperson and notify the council president and city clerk prior to the public hearing. Opponents are also required from open meeting law to enter into the record documentation of their testimony. Add, for public hearings, considering general matters, each individual may speak up to three minutes. F, communications to be read into the record and filed. Add, four matters received seventy-two hours prior to the date and time of the advertised public hearing. G, questions by city counselors to either side, we're going to add. Or to city administration. The council president may require set time allotments for questions based on the meeting agenda. The allowance should include the asking of the question only, not the answer provided by either side or city administration. And I so move.
Motion made by Counsel Nolan, seconded by Counsel Grow. So now we're in the discussion. Counsel Worthley.
Thank you. I think we're doing this a little out of order, but I'm guessing you just provide the narrative that is needed here. I think all these are well intentioned and I intend to support most of it, but I have a couple of questions and potentially some amendments. So in section D, I'm just looking at the screen right here, section D. Is the responsibility of opponents to select a spokesperson and notify the council president and city clerk prior to the, is the public hearing. So for two years before I first ever served the city council, I went to every city council meeting and oftentimes people would go to the meetings. They'd hear somebody speak in favor and say, whoa, I don't like that. I want to speak against it. How would they notify, before the public hearing, notify the council president or the clerk? And how long in advance do they need to notify? Because I think there's times in real time action, people might not know that they're against something until they hear it. So that's a question, I guess.
So you're talking about the major fifteen minute person? So so you're, you're saying that if they show up and and there's no one there that that has spoken in fifteen minutes, that we should just give it to whomever wants to just speak for fifteen minutes? Is that?
That's not what I asked.
Okay.
Whether it's a major or minor issue, it's it's major to the person who's speaking, right? And so I'm guessing the first person who speaks is that main presenter. But some people don't know it's on our agenda or don't know that they're against something until they hear one side. So how so someone speaks against something, are they limited to three minutes unless they've notified the council president in advance that they're the main opposition speaker?
The in, the intent here is that if they have a formal presentation that's helpful, that represents the entire side, that that is that if we're allowing that to be done with the, the the people that are in support, whether it be the special council permit person or a member of city staff, if it's Gloucester Code of Ordinance, that we want to give that same opportunity for someone that feels contrary. But they really need to be the one that's representing that group, not just a person that wants to go and speak for fifteen minutes. So that's why my feeling is, is that you probably, if you're going to be that person, you should know that you're that person in advance. And and I, I think I shared with you the issue that we had in one of the zoning matters that there were two people, one didn't really agree with the person that was selected or was doing it. And she came and she asked me who selected that person. And and I didn't want to be the one that was getting in the middle, because my job was just to listen to the special permit being recognized by city staff. And I just, I just said, you, you need to go and work it out with the people that are in opposition, right? And that seemed to make sense. I don't want to be the one controlling who that person is. They need to work together to determine who the spokesperson should be with a more formal presentation, if that's what that group wants to do. If no one wants to do that type of formal If no one wants to do that type of formal presentation, I don't think giving 15 minutes to anyone who might want to speak is really, it's not representative to the totality of that group. And that's, that's my position on this. If you.
I understand your answer, and I think we have the same objective, which is to have the pros and the people in favor, people against have equal opportunity.
Yeah.
But I also know that there are some people who don't know they're against something until they hear it. And so how would they communicate to you or anybody in advance? They want to be the, and how are these people going to coalesce, you know, Matt and picturing Kyra's auditorium? Oh, there's an agenda item they didn't know about, they hear a presentation, they want to speak. How do they communicate to the council president other than raising their hand at the meeting, saying they'd like to speak against it? That they're the, the selected spokesperson? And if they don't do that, then they're not given the same opportunity that the proponent would have. So I don't know how, I don't say, I don't think I have an answer. I just, it raises a good question. I think it's a good question. How would the opponent know unless they're an organized group that they're against something until they hear one side?
Councillor Grow has his hand raised.
I, I, I see what you're saying. I think the, the, the answer is, is that there are issues that arise that, that generate broader basis of opposition. Let's, let's take for instance, the, the 116 East Bain Street project from, from years ago. There was clearly the, the proponents were there and they gave their presentations and they did that. And there was clearly opposition. And by the time it got to the public hearing, there was a pretty good understanding that there was a group of people opposed to it. If those people wanted to put together a presentation that said, you know, explain their opposition, they would be given the, the 15 minute window to do that like any other block of, of presenters. Nobody's being prevented from speaking in opposition. So if you show up at a meeting, you're the guy who shows up at the meeting and you're for something else and you hear this and you think, wait, I gotta say something, there's nobody's going to stop you from giving you your three minutes. But you're, you're not likely to develop a 15 minute proposal in opposition. And I think what it does is it, 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 it reduces the, the first to the mic rush. You know, whoever, if we have, if the first person to the mic always gets 15 minutes, then you've, 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 you're sort of weighing 15 minutes of, of testimony from one person as opposed to the whole group. I mean, I, I, I see what you're saying, but I think that generally speaking, if there's organized opposition, they'd be given the same opportunity as organized proponents, but everybody still has the opportunity to speak pro and con.
If I may add to that, Madam Chair.
You may, you have the floor, councillor.
Thank you. So councillor, I think we're on the same page here. I would say, and I don't know how to amend this in real time, but if there is an organized opposition and they note that with the council president or the city clerk, then they'd have that first 15 minutes. But if there's no organized opposition, you wouldn't want the, the new opponent, right? The person who just is at the meeting and the only person up against it to only have three minutes when the proponent had 15. So I don't know if there's a way to say if a, if a, I don't know how to say this, if a spokesperson has been identified as the, if the opponents have identified a spokesperson, they need to let the council president and clerk know that in advance. Otherwise, I think both sides, who might not identify themselves in advance, should have this equal opportunity to speak. And I know people who can, can speak for 15 minutes, even if they're not prepared, for better or worse. But I think out of fairness, we should say if there's no opposition group that's been identified or no spokesperson identified, they, that person should have the full 15 minutes. And it's not the first to the mic, because if they already been identified, that person would be, be that person. Don't know how to amend this in real time. If anybody is more clever than I am, I am to express that point, I'd certainly appreciate that.
Thank you. Our councillor O'Neill.
Thank you. It's my suggestion that you don't add that sentence and that would solve councillor Worthley's concerns.
And I. So what, what, what sentence?
Add, it is the responsibility of opponents to select a spokesperson and notify the council president and city clerk prior to the public hearing. Just leave it the way it is and don't add that. Public hearings are put in the newspaper, or I will say, May 8th, Monday, May 8th. The agenda is posted on Friday, the 12th. The meeting is the 15th, three days later. That can be a lot of work for someone. And I understand the public hearing was posted on the Monday, but the agenda's not posted until the Friday. And the agenda might not always reflect what the public hearing was posted. Mostly it does, for sure, but three days, when are you supposed to notify the, the clerk? Three days, I mean, it doesn't say. It says prior to the public hearing, five minutes before, five days before. If we just eliminate that sentence, I think, I don't think it's necessary. I think it, I think it skews everything and I won't support that. Thank you.
Councillor Grow.
I, I think public hearings are, are noticed two weeks ahead of time. So, you know, and then, then the public hearing is only the announcement of the public hearing. It doesn't affect that it's already been announced on an agenda and moved to a subcommittee for review and then sent back to the city council. So it's not like it's the first time that it, that it pops up on the horizon. So I, I think you're, you're giving, you're giving, I think you're giving people an opportunity to actually coalesce and create an opposition that is, that, and I think that that's happened on, on numerous issues that I can think of. That it gives them the opportunity to, to actually give a presentation. I, I disagree. I don't, I, I mean, I think that, that if you, if you leave it to the first person gets 15 minutes and everybody else gets three minutes, I don't think that that's, that's necessarily a fair way to, to treat everyone else. You know, I mean, the, the proponent is putting forward the thing because that's what, that's what we're going to be voting on. They, they're explaining why it is that they're putting it forward. The opposition has the opportunity to do that and rebut that. And then everybody gets their opportunity to speak for three minutes. So I, I think I'm, I'm, I'm pleased with the way this is written. I think it's clear enough that it gives everybody the oppo- opportunity to be where they need to be in terms of speaking for and against and, and as a unit or individually.
Councillor O'Neill.
The agenda comes out on the Friday and the meeting is on the Monday. So it's not two weeks, it's three days after the agenda is posted. So, and I, oftentimes I find myself in that situation. I look at the public hearing, okay, that's great. And then I look at on the Friday, it's like, oh my God, we get 10 public hearings in three days. So for the regular person, you know, people who work on weekends, people who, who work, I, I just don't think, I, 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 I just can't vote for that. It's just, so it's asking way too much of people. And they should be able to speak. You're allowing proponents to speak. Opponents should be given the same amount of time, whether they have to hash it out in the corner at Kyra's auditorium or on the phone with each other before they call in on the Zoom. They should be given the same exact courtesy and rights that the proponents get.
Literally are.
This is what, this is why I put this in, councillor.
I don't see that.
Um, it just, it's, it's a prepared presentation. If you don't give people an opportunity to present a prepared presentation, then they're just going to go up and talk and say the same thing for 15 minutes. And when we have eight or 10 public hearings and one person just, that's not prepared, goes in, in, doesn't have like representing that entire group of people that they're representing, then the rest of the people are going to feel like that's not representing what I wanted to say. And, and it's giving, it's a giving them to do a collective opportunity to get that group prepared.
Taking their opportunity away, the way I see it. So sorry, I cannot vote for this. I think it's all wrong.
Okay, councillor Majota and then councillor Worthy.
Just per the charter, we have to give two weeks notice for any public hearings. So yes, we might have eight public hearings in one session. But councillor O'Neill, if something is posted, everything is based, that's why in our subcommittees, everything's based on two weeks out. So if we have a public hearing for Gloucester Water, we'll let everyone know May 2nd. And then city clerk looks two weeks out. So whatever that is, May 16th. So you would have two weeks prepare. It's not like it goes out on the second, no on Friday, and then the meeting's on the ninth. You have another full week to prepare for the meeting. So all our public hearings are two week notice. Not one week based on your, the way you're wording it. That's all.
The agenda is posted on a Friday. The agenda, how many times is the agenda revised? Often, right?
But what?
So.
This is, this is.
Three days after, after the agenda is posted, you have three days and it's just not. And you're taken away, it doesn't even matter if it's two weeks.
Point of order, please.
15 minutes.
Councillor Nolan, state your point.
Uh, my point of order would be that we have a councillor talking out of line without the timeframe and rebutting with another councillor. There was some information given about the time period for when we do public hearings after committee meetings. And our city clerk has her hand up to give the factual information on advertisement.
On the public hearing, yeah, because they're different times. So I'm going to give the floor to Madam Clerk and then back to councillor Majota. Madam Clerk.
Okay, so I, I just want to clarify that for ordinance changes, it's not two weeks. It has to be at least seven days before the public hearing that we have to advertise. Special city council permits and zoning matters are two weeks. So not every public hearing is advertised two weeks. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to give the floor back to councillor Majota.
No, that's it.
Are you good? Okay, councillor Worthy.
Yes, thank you. I think that councillor Neil's points are valid. I think councillor Gross, Grow's is valid, councillor Kilman. All this is, is intended to get more structured participation. I'd like to offer an amendment to this amendment that I think accomplishes what we're trying to do. I could be wrong and we could debate that, but can I make amendment to this? It's an amendment to the amendment, is that right?
Well, the amendment is what the motion is. So this is the first amendment that you're making.
Correct. So I'd like to, to amend it so that if the opponent, so if the opponent selects a spokesperson and notify the council president and city clerk 48 hours prior to the public hearing, that person will be given 15 minutes. If no one has been selected, the first person to speak in opposition will be given up to 15 minutes. Each subsequent speaker shall update three minutes each. Opponents are required, open meeting law, to enter into the record documentation of their testimony and I so move.
Uh, motion made by councillor Worthy, seconded by councillor O'Neill. Councillor Worthy, support your amendment.
Right, so I think that councillor Grow makes the excellent point that there shouldn't be a rush to the microphone and the first person gets 15 minutes and everyone else gets three. And this would prevent a random person getting that 15 minutes when there is an organized opposition. But it also would afford, if there is no organization, that an opposition, a person speaking opposition would have the same opportunity that the person in favor does. So it covers both sides where if there's an organization that says, no, we want to be the, the main speaker, they will be given that chance for 15 minutes and everyone else get three. And if there's no one that has been selected, then it doesn't take away 15 minutes from an opposition, person speaking, person speaking in opposition. So that's why I made that motion. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on the amendment to the motion, councillor Grow? You are muted.
Yeah, no, I couldn't find myself on the screen here. Uh, the downside of putting the 48 hour limitation on that is that, that's 48 hours. I'm assuming that you don't count the weekends, so they have to notify by Friday because there's no way to do 48 hours in advance of, of a Tuesday meeting. So you're good, you know, we're, we're pushing that, pushing the needle back. I mean, I think if, if an opponent calls up the, the council president and city clerk the morning of the, the meeting and says, hey, we have a presentation, is anybody else, you know, asked us to speak first? And the answer is no, then they get, they get it. I think, you know, I, I think it, I think it's written just fine, frankly. And I, I don't know, I don't know that the amendment, I, I understand what you're trying to do, but I don't know that it clarifies it any better.
If I may respond to that?
Go ahead, councillor Worthy.
So first, you're right. Now, I put in 48 hours because this doesn't speak to any time. It just says in advance the meeting. But I think, and I am be happy to take a friendly amendment and take that out. Uh, I just think that you're right. A group should, if a group wants to speak first, they should have a right to do it, especially if they've selected themselves to do that, organized. But I just don't want that 15 minute opportunity to be taken away from the random persons at a meeting and no one else is organized to speak against it. They should have the same opportunity as the proponents. So I'd be happy to, and I'm not even, I can share this if it's easier. I can be happy to take the 48 hours notification. The original motion doesn't speak to how far in advance they requested to provide the information. So I just want to seek some clarity on that. But I can take that part out.
Well.
Um, that, I mean, that, that's fine with me. I mean, I, I, I would prefer it to be a presentation given the day of than, than not a presentation, right? So I think that that, that fulfills what kind of what, what would, what, what I envision is some representation of the entire body that everyone is behind, right? With, with the opportunity for slides and, and just like the folks that are proponents, right? So I, I think that that, I don't think it has to be there in advance. So I'm fine with, with with your friendly motion of just deleting a timeframe. That's my opinion, councillor Memard, and then councillor Grow.
You know, I, I think we may be overworking this to a certain extent. I think some of it has to be at the discretion of the chair. It, it's not uncommon in my experience the last seven years that there may be two opposing parties, for example, that really have different stakes in the game. And it's been the practice of the council president to allocate the 15 minutes between them, for example. But that's made at that, at the time of the meeting. You know, you have seven and a half minutes and you have seven and a half minutes, whatever. The opposition is not always as well organized as the proponents, but they, they do often include a range of points of view. They aren't necessarily a unified point of view. So it's important for us to try and give them a chance to express that if possible. Uh, again, I think we're overworking this to a certain extent, that some of it's at the discretion of the chair, but I think these are constructive guidelines.
Thank you. Who else had their hand raised? Councillor Grow.
I think we're overthinking this.
Okay.
I think, I think that we, if we just left it alone, all of our concerns would be answered. I, I really do think that we, we're, we're trying to, you know, foresee too many scenarios where the original, the original language covers everything that we're all have spoken, our concerns about. It doesn't put any constraints on anything. It requires that the opposition be somewhat, you know, have their, their act together to be able to come up and speak as a co, and, and have a, a a presentation that, that's available to them. I think if we just leave the original language, everybody's concerns would be taken care of.
Um, I'm not, I'm not opposed to withdrawing without objection unless somebody objects. So, you know, I, I was just trying to do something that I thought was diplomatic and helpful. And, but if that's not the consensus of the committee, then I'm willing to. Councillor Grow, councillor Nolan, and then councillor Worthy, I'll have their hands raised.
I think I agree with councillor Memard and councillor Grow that we're overthinking and overworking this. But what this does do, it, it is the responsibility of opponents to select the spokesperson and notify the council president and city clerk prior to the public hearing. Every public hearing that we have on Zoom, as soon as the thing starts, there are people put their hands up and we usually go in order when those hands go up. So if a organized opposition has not presented themselves prior to this, then whoever is the first on that with their hand up, in first in line, is going to get that 15 minutes. And I think this really actually does do service to people who have taken the time and the effort to organize opposition and let the council president know, hey, we have a presentation, it's 15 minutes, we'd like to present it in opposition. Boom. Because the first person who raises their hand may not, you know, they might be like, well, I have a question. And then your 15 minutes is gone because you don't get, you don't get part of 15 minutes. It's your 15 minutes and you're the first person, so that's, that's it. And then your fifteen minutes is gone because you don't get, you don't get part of fifteen minutes. It's your fifteen minutes and you're the first person, so that's, that's it. I think it, it clarifies that the opposition. Is, is to be taken seriously at that point in terms of if they put together a presentation, they get to go first. And then everyone else gets their three minutes and everybody gets to, to speak their point of view. But the way we do it now. The first person with their hand up is the first person who speaks and it, and it has no, no relevance to what they're actually going to be saying. So I, I would, I would, I'm not going to support the amendment. I'm going to support the original uh, amendment to the language that's moving forwards and then. Hope for goodness we can get through this thing tonight.
Um, I'm going to give uh, Counsel O'Hara the floor because um. We can hear him right now and we know he's in the airport, so would you unmute yourself? Counsel, you have the floor. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Um, I, I agree with a lot as it's been said, the opposition groups typically are, are very. Uh, disorganized and, you know, form, there, there may be two or three people as one group and four or five in another. And, you know, the, these, these citizens, taxpayers, our constituents deserve. To be represented on that given uh, evening. Um, I, I agree that, uh, you know, I think the, the. The chairperson needs to, you know, be the umpire at, at the moment to try to. Differentiate, but, you know, ultimately allow. The opposition fifteen minutes, whether it's one person, two persons, or three. Um, but it, it's, it's very clear there's, it's, it's a rarity. That you have an organized opposition, so we, we owe it to, to allow those people. Um, I, again, I guess that night, the chairperson has to earn their money. Because it's, it's gonna be kind of the seat of the pants, who gets what, but ultimately. They deserve fifteen minutes and then ultimately after that, three minutes each. Thank you.
So. Counsel O'Hara, um, so you would agree that. If we just. If I withdrew this, it still says what you're saying. Um, what, what Tony said, so um. So I, you know, I have no problem doing that. I think maybe I was overthinking it and um, trying to be fair. Um, in process oriented, so if, if that is the case. Um, without objection, counselors, I'm, I'm happy. Alright, so there's an objection, so we're gonna, we'll have to, we'll have to vote this.
Um, we haven't voted the amendment yet, you know, we haven't.
That's true, that's true. So in fairness to Counsel Worthy, um. That's true, so thank you. Um, Counsel Nolan.
I'm glad that we're on the second one, who are already all over the place.
This was the hardest one.
I, I believe what you have proposed in the first uh, order is the best way to go. Um. It, it creates a, a, a chance for the opposition to come together and communicate with you. It doesn't give a timeline. It could be at four thirty at night, someone could call you up before the city council meeting and say. I have a, a group people and I'd like to give you fifteen minutes. And you can say yes to that. Um, I don't think it, it takes away from anything. And I think keeping the order as written. Uh, I think it's the best thought out situation that we have in front of us. Um, I don't support any of the amendments. I, I support the, the original order.
Okay, um, Counsel Worthy and then back to Counsel O'Hara.
Thank you. So my motion's on the table and what I think I did, and I'd like to revisit it, is. Bridge that gap. And, and the gap I see is if no one presents themselves as the organized opposition in advance the hearing. Then we're only given the opposition three minutes or give the proponents fifteen. And out of fairness. Even though they're not as organized, even though they're not as prepared, even though they didn't provide stuff in, in advance. If there's a opposition group or individual. They deserve the same opportunity and so there's fifteen minutes that they could use to do that. So what mine. Proposed, my amendment does is simply say. Instead of, as Counsel Gilman, I, I think again wisely added. They, they need to select themselves a spokesperson. All I'm saying is, i- if they do that, great, they get fifteen minutes, and if they don't, then the first person to oppose it then would be. Given the same opportunity as the proponent, so. I, I don't know, is it possible I can share my screen so that language can be very clear? So I, I, there's some, some changes to it as we're speaking in real time here. I don't know if that's even reasonable to do. Um. But I would like to do so, so everyone knows what we're voting on.
Counselors, um, without objection, can Counsel Worthy be given the privilege to share a screen? And um, that would be great. And this is on the, um, this is on the amendment to the motion.
Right, now let's make sure I do this right. Uh, let's see, share screen. Last time I did this, my microphone went off, so. Uh, let's see. Hang on. It would be. I think I got it. Can we see that?
Hmm.
Yes.
Okay.
Small print, but um, or maybe that's because I need to make it bigger.
You can pinch it out.
So when I make it bigger, then your face has got smaller and I need to try to keep track of who's raising their hands, but. Um, I can, I can read that. Go ahead, do you want to read it, Counsel Worthy?
Sure, and this is what's, I think on the floor, but I made one change. If the opponent select a spokesperson and notify the council president and city clerk prior to the public hearing. I took out the forty-eight hours, public, prior to the public hearing, that spokesperson will be given fifteen minutes. If no one has been selected, the first person to speak in opposition will be given up to fifteen minutes. Each subsequent speaker shall have up to three minutes each. Opponent, as, as, this is all the same, opponents are required, open meeting law, to enter into the record documentation of their testimony. That is a motion on the table. So I think that does cover all scenarios. Without having to overthink it anymore.
Okay, um, so. I think everyone's clear on what Counsel Worthy's amendment is. Um, Counsel O'Hara, your hand is up. Do you have something more to say? Or was that up from the first time?
Yeah, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. Um, so on Counsel Worthy's um, amendment, any further discussion? Uh, Counsel Gross.
Um. On the. I'm, I'm not going to bawl for this for one. Very specific reason is that it doesn't fulfill the open meeting law. Um, requirement of presenting the um. The, the documents, their documents, because they have obviously, you know, if they're flying by the seat of their pants, they're not going to have that. So opposition is in this, by open meeting law, is recognized as an organized um. Group who would need to have their. Their act together, um, somewhat. They can write something up while sitting in the audience and the way I see it. The timeframe is, you know, right up until the public hearing starts, um, is when notification can happen. Um, how, I'm not quite certain how that um, would transpire as far as the public being. Um, recognized um, into that, but at least right up until the start of the city council meeting. I would see that that's what that timeline um, states as it, as it did before. I mean. Originally, there was no deadline. Um, you know, people just got up, they just had to have supporting documentation. Um, so that's, that was the only requirement that they had before to be a, a recognized um, opponent that gained the fifteen minutes. And giving fifteen minutes to the very first person is, is just completely unfair to everyone else, so I just cannot support that.
Anyone else like to speak on the amendment? Uh, Counsel O'Neill.
Thank you. I think it's unfair. To ask opponents. To. To not have the fifteen minutes. Um, if they don't have something, some documentation. Um. You're asking the layperson. To get up and speak up against what an attorney has presented in many cases. So for a regular person to get up and stand up against. An attorney, I won't mention any names because they're all very astute, I just. You're not, they're not getting the same. Rights as the proponents. And they deserve the same rights. I, I, I. I would go with uh, Counsel Worthy's amendment. To the motion, but again. Opponents deserve what the proponents get.
Um, anyone else like to speak on the amendment? Um, I'm not going to support the amendment, but I'm not going to support. My original motion either, so, but we'll have to vote that. I'm, I don't think, I think we, we already have the fifteen minutes covered as. Um, Counsel Gross said, and um, perhaps I'm overthinking this, so um. Um, so let's, let's, let's um, vote on the um, amendment and then we'll go back to the main motion. Um. Counsel Nolan.
And which amendment would this be? Yours or Jeff's?
It would be Jeff's. Mine was my, was the motion. Jeff's is the amendment.
No.
Counsel O'Hara.
No.
Counsel O'Neill.
Yes.
Counsel Worthy.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, no. Counsel Gross.
No.
Counsel Grow.
Uh. No.
Counsel Majota.
No.
Counsel Memard. Counsel Memard.
It's alright, no.
Um, motion fails um, for the amendment. Um. Two in favor, um, seven opposed, so now we're back to the main motion. Um. So, um. We can vote. Any further discussion on the main motion? Thank you, Joanne. You, that was helpful. Quick switchback. Um, on the main motion. Um, Counsel Worthy.
Thank you. You mentioned withdrawing. I'm not sure if that's, you're voting for us to withdraw or if we're voting on this motion, but.
I don't think you want, I don't think I'm getting a feeling that they want to do. A withdrawal, so um, without objection, so I think we're gonna have to either. Move this up or down, and if we move it down. Um, if, if we move it up, then. What I have in front of us right now holds. If we. Oppose it, then the original language before all the red is what holds. So we go back to what was there.
On letter F, communications to be read in the record. And filed for matters received seventy-two hours prior to the date and time of the advertised public hearing. So. Um. If someone were to email all of us at, on the Monday before hearing. That would not count with the seventy, it needs to be seventy-two hours prior. Now, I understand, out of fairness, the clerk's office, it wouldn't be fair to say on a Monday at four o'clock or Tuesdays, they're trying to get rid of a meeting, to say they need to. Coalesce letters or communications and share those with the council, but communications that come directly to counselors. I think there's a point, and I don't know where that point is, but. Far closer than seventy-two hours. Um, and I think at our governance meeting, we said seventy-two business hours, so that would really be Friday, Monday, Tuesday. If someone emails me at Monday before a public hearing. I, I mean, look, I can understand Tuesday, you're kind of close because there's a lot to take in. But you give me forty, twenty-four hours in advance. I'm okay counting that as part of the record. And so I, I don't want to discount when people communicate via email. Not everyone can make meetings and they don't know they can't make the meeting until. They know they can't make the meeting, so I. Either won't support it or if we can shorten that, um, I'd appreciate that.
Joanne, Madam Clerk, can you review what, what, isn't there, is there a state law on um. The amount of time that a public, um, that. That um, information has to be received, because I know that we've always had seventy-two business. Hours um, in the postings. Does that mirror a state law?
No, that was something that just, um, a former Assistant General Counsel. We had um, asked her whether we could put that into the um. Public hearing notice. Because up until the meeting. And during the meeting. I was getting communications that people wanted me to, you know. Forward to the counselors. And I'm running the meeting, there isn't a way for me to just pause and, and forward everything. And also after like, the business hours at four o'clock, you know, on a, like, you know, on a. Meeting like tonight, I don't usually look at my emails until I log in to open up this meeting. So sometimes I see emails from um. Constituents wanting, you know, me to forward for a matter that the council is going to be taking. Up, and I'm not sure whether the counselors will receive that or not, whether they're looking at their emails. Um. So it ma, it makes it difficult, so she has suggested that we can put this in there if they want to be part of the record. I forward emails that I'm copied on. But won't be pa, part of the record up until. The business day before or up until four o'clock.
Hmm.
And I forward them to the counselors if I'm copied on them. If the counselors are all copied on it, sometimes you get emails that I, I'm not copied on. So there's no way of knowing, you know, for the record, for me to read it in the record. Correctly. How many emails there would be. So that was just the suggestions from the former Assistant General Counsel, so that we could put that into our legal notice.
Okay, and I think um, based on the feedback that we had at our O and A meeting. Um. We. I put seventy-two hours because not business hours, because seventy-two is closer to the hearing date. Because that includes the weekend, right? So. So that, I, 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 I felt that that was closer. It gave people more time to get their information in formally, and that just becomes part of the correspondence report in the public hearing. Whereas all the other documents are read by us. And um, you can certainly, you know. Counselors can communicate how many they've received since that deadline, you know, additional information if you wish, but. To ask the clerk's office to be compiling that up to the last moment is really difficult. Based on the volume in the clerk's office, particularly getting ready for these meetings. Um, and, and that's why I softened that. To be seventy-two hours because I was trying to meet halfway a little bit, if that makes sense. Um. Do, do you agree? Joanne, go ahead. You have the floor.
Yeah, to the chair, um, to the council president, I think it was my recollection. At the O and A meeting that Saturdays and Sundays did not count. It was the Friday before, and even though City Hall was closed at twelve-thirty. It was that time that Friday, when I came in on Monday morning. Then those communications would be read into the record. Anything I received on Saturday and Sunday. Um, I think we had this discussion and I think um, it was Counsel Gross who suggested Friday. Um, and then not have any um, Saturday and Sunday communications.
Um, I said seventy-two business hours was almost two weeks, so I said you should just go to seventy-two hours.
Hours.
Right, so Counsel Gross said that, um, he felt that the time allotment method worked well in a previous public hearing. There was a brief discussion about the seventy-two hours. Is this the right one? I'm on the page four of eleven, Counsel Gross. Um. Oh yeah, there were, there was a brief discussion about the seventy-two hour timeframe prior to a public hearing for the public to submit correspondence. It was determined that seventy-two hours. And not seventy-two business hours was fair to both the public and to the city clerk's office who has to record the correspondence. That's what Counsel Gross said, so.
Okay.
That's why I modified and got rid of the business and just made it general. Um, Counsel Grow. And then Counsel Memard.
Thank you. I, I think this, this, again, we're kind of overthinking here. One is that. The seventy-two hours is designed so that the city clerk's office can put together a presentation of. Matters at hand and the correspondence received at that point. Every one of us receives emails and I take it seriously on Friday or Monday or Tuesday, the emails that are sent to me, and they're usually sent to all the counselors. So we're getting the input. We're, it's not that we're not getting input from people and we're not taking that input, we can't. It's not that we can't consider that input moving into it. They also then have the opportunity to speak and read that email at the public hearing, so. This isn't really about uh, uh, any, any lack of access to. The public forum. This is about giving the clerk's office the opportunity to assemble. This is about giving the clerk's office the opportunity to assemble a prepared package, and I think that, I think that that's 72 hours. I mean, if you wanted to make it Thursday, end of business day Thursday, and then your Fridays, Sa- Sa- Friday, Monday, Tuesday are your 72 hours, fine. Um, but I think that it's unreasonable to expect the clerk to, to juggle all those communications right up to the end of, right up to the uh, the hour of the public hearing. And, and you're going to inevitably miss people, which is probably worse, I think. So.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Counsel Memard.
That's okay. Good job, Scott.
You know, Ja- Jason sort of said what was on my mind, that, I mean, it's good to have a threshold and a point in time where the clerk can take, stop their responsibility to include this in the formal record. We will, as counselors on email um, and the telephone, continue to receive input from constituents right up to our meetings. But there, there needs to be a, a point in time when the clerk is no longer legally responsible. Uh, and people are alerted that they, if they, if they have something they want to say, they, they need to get it in, in advance to have it part of the formal legal record. That doesn't mean that they can't communicate with us, it's just not part necessarily of the legal record going into the meeting. But I think that's a fair balance, and, and the, the way it's proposed here is just fine.
Thank you. Um, Counselor um, Worley, your hand is raised.
Thank you. Counsel Grow and Counsel Memard, thank you for that clarification. Um, and I think we all get communications right up to the last minute. What I, I'll call it a misreading, uh, communications to be read into the record and filed is different than communications. Right? So we are obviously allowed to receive information up till and including during a public hearing. And I was reading it as if people can't email us, or if they email us on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, that it doesn't count. But most of the times we were public hearing, that's when those emails start coming in. So I think we all have made it clear that we are receiving information up to, including during the meeting, and it's not the obligation of the city clerk to have to read them into the record at the meeting. Sorry for, for being overzealous to protect that. I think we're all on the same page. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on um, this? Okay, so let's be clear that if we vote um, in favor of this, you're accepting the red changes. If you vote in opposition, we're going back to the way it was before this. Counsel Gross.
So i- if I understand it, if we vote in favor, we're voting for all the changes, including um, section D, the opponents' section. Um, and if we vote against it, we're voting all of them down. So.
Yeah, unless, you know, the, the only thing that.
I'd propose an amendment.
Go ahead. I was hoping you would.
Um, I'd like to propose that um, in the first one presentation of opponents, that we leave it um, as previously written um, and not with the amended language um, added, and that F and G remain um, as amended.
Second.
Some more.
Sorry, second.
Um, motion made by Counsel Gross, seconded by Counsel Worley on the amendments. Everybody clear? C and D remain unchanged, just like they were all the time, and F and G's um, are, um, the, the red changes are included. Counsel O'Neill, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, G, we haven't even discussed. How can we vote on it? We haven't discussed it.
Well, no one brought it up in the discussion.
Well, okay, I'd like to bring up, I, I don't, how can we vote?
Point of order.
Um, Co- Co- Counsel O'Neill.
I have the floor. I still have the floor.
Counsel O'Neill.
Point of order. I'm sorry.
I have the point of order.
I had, so state, state your, state your, state your point, Counsel O'Neill.
Thank you. We haven't even discussed question G. How can we vote on something we haven't discussed? That's not, it doesn't make sense. I would like to discuss rule four, rule number four, section G. I need to discuss that, please. Before we even think of voting on.
Okay, um, so Counsel Grow, so Counsel Grow has a point of order on your point.
The point of order, if I could, is that Counsel Gross has just made an amendment to eliminate the changes in D. That's all we're voting on at this point.
That's not what he said. He said if we vote that yes, then we're voting for C, D, uh, D, F, and G, right?
My understanding was that he was not voting to change anything in F and G, but I believe that we would then be able to speak to your questions on G after we vote for his amendment.
That's not my understanding.
Okay.
My understanding is that we're voting for yes for all of them.
Would Counsel Gross like to change his amendment?
My amendment would only be an amendment to change section D. It would not be an amendment to vote everything. That's the um, that was Counsel, uh, Counsel President Gilman um, asked if we were going to vote the question, and I said I'd like to make an amendment to the question. No one had brought up anything about question D or section G, rather. Um, I, the only thing that I, my amendment concerns is uh, section, is rule four, section D.
So just, just to explain where we are right now, Counsel O'Neill. Um, the amendment basically says C and D remain in the black, just putting what was initially there, and F and G remain with the red changes. So after this amendment is made, if we agree on this amendment, we will go back to the new main motion, which is, we'll give you an opportunity to speak on F and G. Does that make sense to you?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, so um, everyone's clear on the amendment? Yes, okay. Um, roll call vote on the amendment made by Counsel Gross. Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
No.
Counsel O'Neill.
No.
Um, Counsel Worley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
No.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
We're, um, Jeff, were you yes?
I was a yes, correct.
Okay, sorry. Um, the um, the yeses have it, one, two, three, four, five, six, six in favor, three opposed, O'Hara, O'Neill, and Grow. Um, so now we're back to um, the main motion um, as amended. So let's discuss F and G.
We already did F.
We already did F, so let, thank you, Counsel Grow. So let's discuss G. Um, who would like to begin the discussion? Um, Counsel O'Neill.
Thank you. Um, I will not be voting for this. I believe it limits um, counselors' access to information and thereby limiting the public's access to information. Oh, I will not be voting for this. Thank you.
Counselors, I am going to let you know, if it's okay with you, I have, I just have a procedural issue. I typically leave my cell phone on in case someone has to leave um, to, to do, to, to leave or, or needs to let me know that they can't be on. And I'm going to turn off my cell phone because I'm getting called by a person um, who's been calling me quite a bit. And um, I know who it is. The last digits are eight, three, six, two of the phone number. I'm not going to mention the name. But um, I'm uncomfortable because someone is trying to deliberate with me and get me to say things during the meeting. And I'm very uncomfortable with it. I think it's a violation of open meeting law. I don't think it's right. And um, in Zoom meeting, it's hard to control who is looking at your cell phone. So I just want you to know that if you have to leave, you just make it the announcement public to all of us. Um, and at this point, I'm turning off my cell phones because I'm very distracted by this person. Thank you. So Counsel Grow, you may continue.
Um, I think that the, the addition of the three or four, whatever minute time period, um, has actually been a real benefit to the counsel's ability to ask, a counselor's ability to ask a series of questions, to ask a follow-up question, to have a train of thought that may, you know, i- if you're limited to one question around or two questions around, sometimes you can lose that train of thought, and you can, you can miss the opportunity to make your point or get the information that you're looking for. I think, contrary to Counsel O'Neill's position, I think that we're getting better information and a more complete picture by having a set period of time. I mean, Congress has a set period of time, you know, people have a set period of time which they can speak, they can ask questions. We can add additional rounds. If, if our three-minute round the first time doesn't, doesn't satisfy our need, we can have another round. We can have another round after that. We can go all night long if we have to, but by giving each counsel an opportunity to speak within that, or ask questions within that period of time. We also, frankly, we, we, we knocked down a bit on, on the, the pre-deliberation deliberation. You got to ask your questions, or you're going to lose your time, and that way we keep on point, and I, I think it's been very beneficial to the meetings, frankly.
Counsel Worley.
Yes, I will agree with Counsel Grow, and I understand Counsel O'Neill's point, but um, I know, and, and Counsel Gilman, I'll thank you for this. There's been times where we've done the right thing, which is shared the floor, but when it happens mid sort of mindset, you lose your train of thought, and maybe it goes another direction where, and by the way, I also add, we've appealed to you, and we can do this going forward, to have an exception. If there's additional questions, I think you've been very generous with allowing more questions after that round, after that point. And if, if something's come up during the, a question that was answered by another, uh, another counselor asking that question, that's been helpful. So I think this is, in the spirit of getting more information out and streamlining our train of thought, um, I will be supporting this change. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, um, who has not spoken on this? Um, Counsel Nolan.
I think that it's been a, a pleasure doing the time questions. Uh, it makes a difference, as in Jason and Jeff has said. Um, when you have a point to make, sometimes it's better to focus on what you, you, you want to know. It's your time, you're allowed to ask and hear your responses. Then when something does come up, and if you didn't get all the answers you want, we do a second round, or a third round. I, I don't believe that we should ever stop because someone wasn't able to ask a question. But I do allow, I do believe that this, this change is for the positive, and I, I support this.
Thank you. Anyone else other than Counsel O'Neill that hasn't spoken? Um, Counsel O'Neill, you have the floor for a second time.
Thank you. I agree that um, as, the ability to ask question after question keeps your train of thought going, so I do like that. I just know that um, some counselors have been stopped from asking questions because they've used their three minutes. I, I just don't think that we should be limited to the, I just don't think we should be limited. It's by set time allotments, and Madam President, you have been generous, but that doesn't mean the next president will be. And to have it written in um, into the um, the rules of procedure, I don't think it's right. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel, Counsel Gross.
Yeah, if, if I'm reading this correctly, I'm not seeing any um, limitation on, as um, previous counselors have noted on that you can come back, you know, you're just limited the first time or each, each time to allow the other counselors um, an opportunity to ask their questions, and then you can come back and uh, go for a second or a third round, as, as Counselor Nolan alluded to. So I don't see it as limiting, and I did find it somewhat liberating to, because you, having the three minutes to ask your questions, but have each question answered in between without having that time counted against you. I found that really helpful as far as being able to organize your next question. And I found that it really added clarity to it, and I applaud this, this addition to happening, and I think that it's really made for a much better um, not only use of our time, but a much better, we serve the community much better um, this way, because out, we're able to organize our thoughts, and we're not thinking, oh, I'm running out of time, um, because you will be able to come back again and ask again. So I don't see any limitation here in this, in this language.
Thank you. Any further discussion, counselors? Um, Counsel O'Neill for the third time.
Thank you. Um, so as it's written in black, questions by city counselors to either side, period, the end, right? Why wouldn't that, why is that not sufficient?
Because we've, because our motion, right, we, we accepted the amendment, and now we're back on the main motion, and that is that we're adding that. That's what, that's where we are at right now. We did not vote to, to delete the red. We are including the red in the, in this, in this, um, this is motion now as amended.
I understand, I understand, but my, in, as a discussion, I feel that the red is not necessary. Like, I think the, what's written in black, it says enough.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay. All right, so are we clear on the question, counselors? So I think we're ready for a vote on this. So Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara. Is he still there? I don't see him. He might have lost his Wi-Fi, or maybe they're landing. Um, so um, Counsel O'Hara is absent. Um, Counsel O'Neill.
No.
Counsel Worley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Um, the yeses have it, seven in favor, one in opposition, Counsel O'Neill, and one absent, Counsel O'Hara. Phew, next order of business, Madam Clerk, or, or actually, it's Counsel Nolan, let's continue.
Here, I'm you.
That's all right, give me a good dry run.
All right, perfect.
Seconded by Counsel Gross. The Audit Administration Committee voted by roll call, two in favor, zero. Uh, two in favor, one opposed, O'Hara, to recommend the city council amend the city council rules of procedure 22 as follows. Rule 12, special permits. For special permits involving section two dash three, use tables.
Wait, wait, wait.
Missed one.
Counsel, we are on um, the one with rule number eight.
Committees.
So you got to back.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So uh, rule eight committees, add E, when a city counselor who is not a member of a standing committee wishes to ask a question, they should email the question to the standing committee chair and copy the city clerk and the clerk committees in advance of the meeting, and I shall move.
Motion made by Counsel Nolan. Um, it was seconded by who? I wasn't looking at the screen.
Counsel Grow.
Thank you. Um, so just on, and you read the right one up top, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, so my um, my intention on this was um, just a procedural way that any counselor who had a question that's not on a standing committee that wanted to ask it would just um, make sure that they notified the chair of that subcommittee and also the city clerk and the clerk of committees, and, and the benefit of that is that they're covered every way. So if there's a transmission problem. is that they're covered every way. So if there's a transmission problem with someone calling in that maybe gave it to another member of the committee, then they're they're kind of tripled covered that that question will be reported as a question from a non-standing committee member. And we had an experience where that occurred and I was just trying to make it right. And it just seems like that's the best process way to make sure that any person's question does get answered. Now, of course, we do know that standing committee chairs have the right, if they wish, to have questions asked in standing committee only if they allow the public to ask questions as well. So if they ask the extra members of the of the council that are there to ask questions, they it's only right if they also ask the public the same thing and that's the right of the chair. So anyway, so I hope you consider this and I look forward to this discussion. So who would like to speak on this? Counsel Worthley.
Thank you. So I appreciate the reason that you you put this forward. If this said, they can email the question to the standing committee chair, I'd be a hundred percent in favor of it. But lots of times, you know, they should means if they don't, then the question can't be asked. And one of the reasons why our any council meeting will be longer is because there are questions that could have been asked or answered at the committee level. Either from the public or from other councillors. I think that the more dialogue happened in the committee, you know, that's where a lot of legwork can get done. It'll save us a lot of time at the council level. And I am not organized enough to know my questions. You know, in advance, we don't say how long in advance prior to committee meetings. Sometimes I'm there and sometimes I have something in mind before the meeting and lots of times I'm listening and absorbing it and saying, hey, had we thought about this like right now, right? I didn't, this would have been wanting you to say, okay, who could get this question in advance? But if this could have been addressed at a committee level spur of the moment, it would save time to the full council. So unless we can do an amendment to say they can email a question, to say they should email a question, it kind of says if they don't do it, then what? The question doesn't get asked and then it gets asked at the full council level. Taking up a lot of time here too. So that's my my thoughts on that one.
Okay, so so you, okay. Any other further comments?
Sean first.
You were down on my screen. You're right there again. Thank you. You have the floor councillor Nolan.
So this is something that was brought up recently. It is a law that if we're going to take questions from councillors other than committee members that we open to the public. Some meetings are not the right place for the committee to ask for public comment and some ours. But if you ask a question via email, we can consider it and we can talk about it ourselves amongst the committee. Most O and A meetings aren't really an issue. We can go to the public. It's it's a fun time. And I have no problem doing that. You may have some issues with P and D or with budget and finance that may end up being a maximum length of time. But I I think that the wording on this is proper and I think it's the way I'm saying that you should send the email out or communicate with the committee to ask your questions or at least ask that we can go to full comment, which would mean the whole meeting on every situation would be open for public comment. So
Mean question.
Doesn't mean, exactly, questions, yes, not deliberating. But so I think this this is a good, a good, a good thing and I'll be supporting it.
Thank you. Any councillor Grow, your hand is raised.
Yeah, I I I agree with councillor Nolan. I think the the intent here is is a couple of things. One is that we have to recognize that under open meeting law. Non-standing committee members are have no more rights or or presence or standing than the member of the public. And I I agree with you, Jeff, that sometimes you questions come up and the whole point of standing committees is to get the the meat of the debate organized and and so given the opportunity to send questions that you you know of at that point, I I've never seen a situation where a a standing committee chair has has not opened up questions to, especially if if members of the councillor are there to ask questions. I think the problem that we end up having sometimes, especially on hot issues, is that people turn question time into statement time and you have to, you have to wield a pretty heavy gavel sometimes to to remind people that they're there for, this is for questions and not for deliberation because it's not the public hearing. But I I think this this reminds committee members that are non-committee members that they can they can have their questions submitted to the to the to the to the committee so that they get conveyed in the in the general discussion and that doesn't obligate the chair to open up the discussion to the general group unless unless they decide at that point to do it. You know, and I think it 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 allows, it gives every every, and members of the public can send their questions too. There's not, that's not a limitation. On on input. So I I support this. I think it it clarifies and and makes makes a line that says that we're we're effectively we're conforming to open meeting law and and being mindful of that.
Great. Thank you, councillor O'Neill.
Thank you. I will agree with councillor Worthley. And oftentimes I don't know what's on O and A's agenda until Monday sometime. So I I I cannot agree with this. I would agree if councillor Worthley would make an amendment to the motion that says they can email the question. I would be happy to support that, but this to me says I cannot ask a question at a subcommittee meeting.
You may not be able to.
And I think that should be up to the the chairman or chairperson. Right? So if it's if it's in the rules of procedure, it's not left up to the chairperson. So.
No, it's still, it's not the way, this is just, this is just an option for a person to take if they don't know how the chairperson is going to run a meeting. So if they if they want something to get asked, we're just asking them to send it in advance to the chair and to members of the city clerk's office. So that's, it's very, it's very black and white. It does, it doesn't, the the chair could still at that very meeting open it up for standing committee and the public for questions. That's the chair's option that they may do that as long as they do it consistently. That's the big open meeting law fairness issue. All right. So we've got some new hands. I'm going to go with councillor Gross and then Grow and then Nolan. On the motion.
So one question I have is we have a ruling that this does not violate open meeting law, that a question is not a form of deliberation because it's a serial deliberation, a serial communication. My next question is, is that this does not you know, remove the chair's ability, like you just said, the chair's ability to recognize, but sometimes it's just it it's just not feasible to recognize the seventy-five people who want to speak at a at a subcommittee meeting and that that needs to be saved because as as was earlier stated, it it becomes less of a question and more of a of statements. And that's should be reserved for the public hearing because that's when the public has been made aware that that's their opportunity to speak and it's not just for a select audience. Also, a a chair can just recognize one person and not the rest. So you also have to understand that. And then there's also been city councils where the dynamics have been such that a chair may not necessarily recognize a fellow councillor question at the meeting. So you you know, this gives the councillors an opportunity to get their questions put in under the record, but I would like it to be make sure that we're not in any, that we're not proposing any violations of the open meeting law here.
So to councillor Gross's comment, I would say that when we have this whole matter approved. We should send this to Suzanne Egan before we post it, just to get a look at the whole thing in its totality. Does that make sense councillors? I think the whole thing, it would benefit having Suzanne look at it after after if we approve this tonight. So I think that's a good thing to do. Let's see, I said after councillor, I think councillor Grow and then councillor Nolan.
Yeah, just just very quickly, you know, if we're not belabor this, the the downside of putting in they can email the question to the standing committee chair. That as Tony says, there's there's no obligation with that, you know, for the chair to recognize that question. I I think should is, there's an intention there and I think that 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 word is fine. As far as the serial communications, I mean, if you're only sending your question to the buckle your seatbelt, Jamie. An email to the standing committee chair is not serial communication. I mean, I I think that a question to the standing committee chair wouldn't 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 rise to serial communication. Assuming that the standing committee chair does not then share it with the whole committee prior to the meeting, the open meeting. But I think that I think that we're safe in that regard. I mean, I'm very mindful that, you know, communications can become you know, serial by by accident, but if you if we stick to the rules here, I think we're we're pretty safe.
Councillor Nolan and then councillor Worthley.
Between councillor Gross and councillor Grow, they've answered all the questions I've had. Good job, guys.
Councillor Worthley.
Yes, thank you. I just want to say that as a member of budget and finance, I felt like councillor Memmard has been very generous in allowing other councillors who've had questions, if they're there at the meeting to ask them. And at planning development, councillor Grow, you've been great at allowing questions as well as councillor Nolan at when I'm at O and S administration committee. So as long as we have that sort of understanding that chairperson can allow questions. Then I don't feel like this prohibits stuff. I think if you can't make the meeting, you want the question asked, or if you want to make sure the question's asked, this is the way to do it. But everyone's been very generous in allowing time. And lots of times, you know, there's only two or three people at these meetings. So it's not like we're opening up to thousands of people and taking hundreds of hours away from everyone else. So I'm okay with it, given that understanding. Thank you.
Thank you councillor, councillor O'Neill.
Thank you. I agree with councillor Worthley and the rest of the councillors that the chairperson has been generous with allowing questions. However, this is written in the rules that in my understanding, they should email the question. In other words, you can't ask a question during the meeting. That's the way I read it.
That's not the way, that's not the way it was intended to read.
No, I understand that's not the way it's intended, but that's how I understand it. It, they should email the question, period, the end.
So would you feel more comfortable if it said they can instead of should? Would that would that help you?
Yeah, that would help me.
Okay, so so I will amend the motion to read as follows. I've got it very small here so I can see all of your faces. So when a city councillor who is not a member of the standing committee wishes to ask a question, they delete should and add can email the question to the standing committee chair and copy the city clerk and the clerk of committees in advance of the meeting and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Gilman, seconded by Worthley. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, a roll call vote on the amendment. Councillor Nolan.
No.
Councillor O'Hara.
Oh, I'll pass on this. I didn't hear the whole debate. I apologize.
Thank you, Jamie. That's the right thing to do and I appreciate it. Councillor O'Neill.
Yes.
Councillor Worthley.
Yes.
Councillor Gilman, yes. Councillor Gross.
Yes.
Councillor Grow.
No.
Councillor Majota.
Yes.
Councillor Memmard.
Yes.
The yeses have it, one, two, three, four, five, six, six in favor. Two opposed, Nolan and Grow and one pass. So we're back to the main motion now. So I think we we know what the main motion is, right? It's it's with the word can. So any further discussion on the main motion? Seeing none, a roll call vote. Councillor Nolan.
Yes.
Councillor O'Hara, pass. Councillor O'Neill.
Yes.
Councillor Worthley.
Yes.
Councillor Gilman, yes. Councillor Gross.
Yes. Yes.
Councillor Majota.
Yes.
Councillor Memmard.
Vera and I both say yes.
The yeses have it, eight in favor, one passing, O'Hara. So that was, that was a good discussion. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, councillor Worthley.
My daughter, she's at my, her mother's house tonight and been texting me and asking me to call and I'd hate to miss the council meeting, but I also hate to miss that call. So I'm going to step aside and mute my mute this and I'll join when I can. And if I missed part, I won't vote on that. I just want to let everyone know that's why I'm stepping aside.
Okay, hold on a sec. Councillor Nolan might be asking for recess. I don't know. Councillor Nolan.
I would like to ask for a five-minute. We're going through things quite well and Jeff's participation is important. So I think it's a great time for us to take a few minutes and have a break.
Okay, so five-minute recess back at eight fifteen. Is there a second on councillor Nolan's recess?
Second.
Councillor O'Neill, we still have to do a roll call, sorry, on the recess. Councillor Nolan.
Yes.
Councillor O'Hara.
Yes.
Councillor O'Neill.
Yes.
Councillor Worthley.
Yes, thank you.
Councillor Gilman, yes. Councillor Gross.
Yes.
Councillor Grow.
Yes.
Councillor Majota.
Yes.
Councillor Memmard.
Yes.
Okay, yes, when nine All right, mute yourselves and all right, let's see, who is Joanne's back. Waiting for Tracy and Scott.
Already I lost connection.
It is really helpful for you to have that that document up, Joanne, so thank you. It makes it much easier for us to follow along. Okay, and we have nine attendees. Okay, so we're almost done with with my my order. So we have one more and I will I will let our O and A chair read the motion.
On a motion by councillor Majota, seconded by councillor Gross. The Audit Administration Committee voted by roll call, two in favor, one opposed, O'Hara. To recommend the city council amend the city council rules of procedure. Two thousand twenty-two as follows. Rule twelve, special permits. For special permits involving section two dash three, use tables. The council must additionally consider the delete six standards in section one point eight point three. Standards to be applied. But not be required to cover all of the delete six standards in making their decision and I so move. And if there's any discussion, Val, the floor is yours.
So is, so councillor Nolan made the motion and it's seconded by councillor Grow. And this is a really simple one.
Oh, no, no.
Oh, I think it is. So so I will, I will say that when we did the the overlay for the coastal resilience. Part of the overlay included a number seven on the standards to be applied. So we just thought by removing six. we were just making it really easy. So I hope that this one we can, is a no brainer. We're definitely simplifying it, and if they ever decide to add an eighth, we don't have to go and, and redo our rules of procedure. So hopefully you'll, um, we can get through this one quickly and get over to our Counsel Gross's orders. So that's all I have to say. Um, motion's been made, seconded. Any further discussion? Let me just check to see. I, I only see eight of you on my screen. Um, I see no hands, so I think we're ready for a roll call vote. Um, Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes, yes.
Counselor O'Neil?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memard?
Yes, I'll vote for that.
Yes, let's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Wow, we, we rocked at that time. Um, so, um, back to Counsel Nolan, and now we're going to continue with, uh, I think that was the end of mine, so we'll continue with Counsel Gross's.
Number two, C C number two thousand twenty-three dash zero two two, Counsel Gross, amend the City Council Rules of Procedure two thousand twenty-two by amending rule number one, meetings, rule number three, agenda procedure, rule number four, public errands, rule number eight, committees, rule number nine, vacancy in counselor position and fill in same. Rule number ten, procedure for selecting an interim mayor. And I so move.
No, it's not the motion.
Oh, nope, you're right. Um. On a motion by Counsel Majota, seconded by Counsel Gross, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted by roll call, two in favor, one opposed, O'Hara, uh, opposed to recommend the City Council amend the City Council Rules of Procedure two thousand twenty-two as follows. Rule one, meetings, E, remote participation at City Council and Standing Committee meetings. It is the expressed desire of the council that remote participation at meetings is an infrequent event. Chairs of council and committees are encouraged to interpret these rules in a strict fashion and to continue to introduce all, induce all members to attend meetings in persons and general rule due to inherent benefits of physical presence in a meeting. Excuse me. A council member may attend a meeting through electronic conferencing. Delete if his or her physical presence at a meeting is prevented due to extenuating circumstances such as personal illness or disability, a family or other emergency, military service, or geographic distance, and then add only if physical attendance would be unreasonable, unreasonably difficult, and I so move.
Second.
Um. Counsel Nolan made the motion, and I think, who, who made the, who seconded it? I wasn't looking. I was reading my notes.
Counsel Gross.
Counsel Gross, I'm seconding it. Um, Counsel Gross, you have the floor, um, to, um, to be the narrative here because it's your motion.
Thank you very much. Um, so the deleted section was in old language that they have taken out of the open meeting law. And the new language is directly out of the open meeting law, um, section. Section five, permissible reason for, um, remote participation out of the open meeting law, and that they made it simpler. Um, I don't know if you guys remember back when the remote participation first, those of us who were there when remote participation first was, um, selected by the mayor for, um, for boards and commissions and for, for public meetings in Gloucester, and that we had to give up one of these reasons. Now they just said, no, the state said, no, you don't have to do that anymore. You just have to state to the, to the Chairperson that your, um, only, you know, the only thing is that you're physically, your physical attendance would be unreasonably difficult, and that's all you've got to tell them. So it's just getting up to date. They, they eliminated, um, I contacted the Attorney General's Office because I couldn't find that old language anywhere one time when I was looking for it in the last year. And they sent me back and they said, oh, no, we only have this. So this is the, just, just changing out to be up to date language in the law.
Thank you. Any further discussion, counselors? Uh, Counsel Worthley and then Counsel O'Neil.
Yes, thank you for that recess, by the way. My daughter said, are they paving all the roads? Is the first thing she said when I got on the phone. Um, so, uh, obviously, if this is language from the state, I, I'm going to support it. But I almost feel like it's a double negative. Only if physical tennis would be reasonably difficult, right? Unreasonably difficult is a, I, I don't know, Natalie Daly, my former English teacher, would say it's a double negative. But Counsel Gross, if this is state language, I'm going to defer to you, but it feels like it's unreasonably difficult is the opposite of what we're trying to do here. If it's reasonably difficult, does it matter? Maybe not.
Uh, it's exactly as written in the law.
I'm not going to change that then. Thank you.
Counsel O'Neil, you had your hand raised.
Yes, thank you. Um. I haven't looked up this law, so I apologize for that, but, um. That remote participation, participation at meetings is an infrequent event. That's not true, right? And, uh, City Council and Committees are encouraged to interpret these rules in a strict fashion to induce all members to attend meetings in person. Um. I think the way it was written is, uh, what, the section that was crossed out was sufficient, and, um, that's the way I feel. I, I don't think that that remote participation is infrequent because it isn't, so I can't vote for this. Thank you.
Any other comments, uh, Counsel Gross?
Um, all of that that's in black is not new. That's existing language. So the only thing that's changed is what's in red.
So the only thing. Go ahead, Counsel O'Neil, you have the floor.
So the only thing you're changing is deleting if his or her, so all that black is already there, and you're deleting if his or her physical presence at a meeting, et cetera?
Correct.
Um. So if there are no further comments, um, I would like to comment, I like the fact that we're now consistent with the law as written. And, um, to Counsel O'Neil's point, um, we are going to be back in person, um, and, um, starting in July, the early July, so by the time this gets, um, reviewed by Suzanne Egan and ready to rock and roll, um, you know, we will be, um, in person, and it will be an exception for if anybody is, um, dialing in remotely. So, um, so I, I'm, I'm, I'm very in favor of Counsel Gross looking at the, the exact wording in the law, so I'll be supporting this. All right, I think, um, we're ready for vote. Um, roll call vote. Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
He's not there.
Okay, absent. Counsel O'Neil?
No.
Counsel Worthley?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Uh, yeah.
Counsel Grow?
With great enthusiasm, yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memard?
Heck, yes.
The yeses have it, seven in favor, um, one opposed, O'Neil, and one absent. Next order of business, um. Counsel Nolan?
On a motion by Counsel Majota, seconded by Counsel Gross, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council amend the City Council Rules of Procedure two thousand twenty-two as follows. Rule number one, meetings, E one, procedures for remote participation, delete. Any member of the council who wishes to participate remotely shall at least forty-eight hours in advance, or as soon as reasonably possible prior to the meeting, notify the city clerk of his or her desire to do so and the reason for, in fact, supporting his or her request. Add, any member of a public body who wishes to participate remotely shall, as soon as reasonably possible prior to a meeting, notify the Chair or, in the Chair's absence, the person chairing the meeting of their des- desire to do so and the reason for their facts supporting his or her request, and I so move.
Second.
A motion made by Counsel Nolan, seconded by Counsel Worthley. Um, Counsel Gross, you have the floor.
Again, this is, um, strictly coming back to the law. Um, this is exact wording out of, um, nine forty C M R twenty-nine point ten seven A, procedures for remote participation. So this is, this is exact wording, um, out of the law, even though it doesn't, it just, it removes the city clerk out of it and has, and it puts it on the Chair. That's the only difference there, but that's what the state, the state changed, the legislature changed this, and that's what all that is, is just getting us up to date with state law.
Thank you. Any further comments, counselors? Um, seeing none?
Counsel Grow has his hand up.
I'm sorry, Counsel Grow.
And I was dancing. Um, I totally support this. The only thing I would do is I'd like to amend it to remove his or her request, to replace it with their request, keeping the mission to gender neutralize all of our, um, rules and procedures and ordinances. So I meant, I moved that we amend, remove his or her requests, replace it with their.
Second.
Um, I think that was Counsel Majota was the second. Um, is there a discussion on the amendment? Replacing his or her with their. Um, seeing none, a roll call vote on the amendment. Um, Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara? I'm absent. Counsel O'Neil?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memard?
Yes.
The yeses have it, uh, eight in favor, one absent. So now we're back to the main motion with that one change. Um, so on the motion, any further discussion? Um, staying on? Um, roll call vote. Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara, absent. Counselor O'Neil?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman? Yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memard?
Yes.
Yeses have it, eight in favor, one absent. Next order of business. Um, Counsel Nolan?
On a motion by Counsel Majota, seconded by Counsel Gross, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council amend the City Council Rules of Procedure two thousand twenty-two as follows. Rule number one, meetings, E three. At the start of the meeting, the Chair shall announce the name of any member who will be participating remotely and the general reason under nine forty C M R twenty-nine, ten, five. Delete N for his or her remote participation, this information shall be recorded in the meeting of minutes, and I so move, so Jason can amend.
I'd like to make a motion to amend. It hasn't been seconded yet. Second.
Um, motion been made and seconded. Um, so on amendment, Counsel Grow?
Is it her to their? So move.
Second.
Oh, I wasn't looking when I heard a second. Who was it?
John and Jeff.
I did, or maybe.
Okay, Jeff, um, so, um, on the amendment, there to his, his or.
There.
Yeah, um, Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Uh, Counsel O'Hara, absent. Counsel O'Neil?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memard?
Yes, he shaped.
The yeses have it, eight in favor, um, one absent. So now we're back to the main motion. Any, um, further discussion on the motion?
Then.
No, seeing none. Um, roll call vote. I'm not, I don't have enough room on my little piece of paper here because we've had so many motions. Um, Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara? Oh, absent, sorry. Um, Counsel O'Neil?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memard?
Yes.
Yeses have it, eight in favor, one absent. We're moving right along. Next order of business, Counsel Nolan?
On a motion by Counsel Majota, seconded by Counsel Gross, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the City Council amend the City Council Rules of Procedure twenty-two as follows. Rule one, meetings. Rules of procedure for participation in remote meetings, E seven, delete. See, if the City Council President, Vice President, and Council with the most seniority are unable to access a City Council meeting held via a video conferencing platform for whatever reason, then the meeting shall immediately adjourn to be scheduled for a later date. Delete D, and we're going to add C. If a city clerk is unable to access a City Council meeting held via a video conferencing platform for whatever reason, then the meeting shall continue, provided there's still a quorum of the City Council, and I so move.
Second.
Second.
Uh, a motion's made by Counsel Nolan, seconded by Counsel Majota. Is there a discussion, counselors?
I'm going to explain it first.
Oh, sorry, Counsel Gross, you have the floor.
So the reason for, for this deletion is because it's, it eliminates, if we still have a quorum, it tells us we can't meet, and that's just not, a- a- as far as I can tell, that's not okay. Because that's not how, you know, the Roberts rules works and, um, or state law, the open meeting law works. As long as you have a quorum, you're allowed to have a meeting, and as long as you're in, you can have the public attending the meeting, you're allowed to have that meeting. So, um, section B, which is not here, states that the City Council President and Vice President are both unable to access City Council meeting held via video conferencing platform for whatever reason, then the city counselor with the most seniority on the City Council shall continue to run the meeting unless and until the President or Vice President returns to the meeting, provided there is still a quorum of a City Council. Now, you'll always have someone who's in seniority all the way down the line, so that sort of addresses this. And so I did not see, I, I thought this was sort of, um, counter to actually to B, because it, B, it says you, as long as you have a quorum. the person who has the most seniority will run it, but this says no. So, and I don't know how they decide that the person with the most seniority is unable to access. How does that happen? You'd have to lose a quorum at that point. So I just found that this, this was an unnecessary rule, that's all. I don't, you guys don't like it and you want to keep it, that's fine with me, but I just thought that this was unnecessary. It's the only purpose. It's there for discussion.
So, Council Worthley?
Yeah, no, I think it's, it makes sense if there's a quorum in the council to continue the meeting. It's not clear. I'm sorry, seniority is not age, it's it's number of years of service, I think.
Oh, that's up to debate, but...
I mean, I think in some cases...
It's, it's, it's the amount of, yeah, exactly. All right, go ahead. Go on, Council Worthley.
Well, do we need to identify that? Look, I don't think this is going to happen in my lifetime that there's going to be a President, Vice President, and a person without seniority unable to meet at the same time and the city clerk, but there'll be someday that there's a fight over who has the most seniority to run a meeting. Maybe we'll just let them fight it out then. Just want to add the question, but it's not relevant at this point.
Right. This was really something that was created when we began with Zoom, because we wanted to make sure we were, we were all frightened with the technology. Now, I don't want to say frightened, but it was new to us, and we wanted to make sure that if someone lost power, someone else was ready to take over, and and that's why Councilor Nolan typically will do the template, he'll do a copy of it and have it there in case he has to refer to it, you know, and it's, and it's just a helpful way to to do it, but I have no problem eliminating it. So, I'll support Council Gross's recommendation. Councilor Nolan?
We've gone as far as speaking with Council President Gilman and myself, that if for some reason she can't be here, that I will wear a colorful sweatshirt and a scarf to make up for it.
So moved. Second.
Very funny, Councilor. Any further questions or further discussion on this on this motion? Council Worthley, is your hand up, or did you just not take it down?
I didn't think it was up.
It's just a tiny white hand halfway down towards your shirt. Very small, not yellow.
Yeah, that's weird. I don't understand that. That's, hand up, that's hand down.
Okay, well, I'll just accept it as not a hand. So, next time you raise your hand, physically raise it, so I don't get... This, it doesn't matter, but there's a hand up right to the right of your tie, your blue tie. Okay. So, we have a motion, we have a second roll call vote. Yes, we ready? Go ahead.
That's a lie cleaner thing, Jeff.
I don't know.
All right, Councilor Nolan? On the motion? Council O'Hara, absent. Council O'Neal?
Yes.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Grow?
Yes.
Council Majota?
Yes.
Council Memard?
Yes, thank you.
The yeses have it, eight in favor, one absent. Next order of business, Councilor Nolan?
On a motion by Councilor Majota, seconded by Councilor Gross, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council amend the City Council Rules of Procedure 22 as follows. Oral communications. The public shall have the opportunity at every regular City Council meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not apparent on the agenda. Oral communication shall allow any resident, ad, and/or Gloucester property owner and/or Gloucester business owner who has a request or a complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to proper agency through the office of the mayor. The resident, ad, per amendment, and/or Gloucester property owner and/or Gloucester business owner must be notified in writing within a two-week period of disposition of the same by the office of the mayor, and a copy shall be forwarded to the City Council. Residents, ad, per amendment, ad or and/or Gloucester property owners and/or Gloucester business owners speaking on the same topic at consecutive meetings under oral communications will not receive additional dispositions from the office of the mayor. Persons speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each and shall submit a copy of their prepared communication to the clerk of committees. Delete. The council president shall not allow complaints as to individual individual performance or character, and I so move.
Second.
Councilor Nolan made the motion, was seconded by Council Worthley. So, let's go back to Council Gross to begin the narrative.
Okay. The reason I put this forward is due to sort of a nationwide, and I know that here on our, on our own little piece of heaven, we feel that we're isolated from these things, but we're not, has been movements by groups to inundate local municipal governments with just nonsense. And I don't know about you guys, but I represent citizens of Gloucester and the voters of Gloucester and the businesses of Gloucester. And that's who I want to hear from. I don't want to hear from, from someone from, you know, South Carolina, from Maine, from, or even Manchester or Rockport telling us how we should be running our city, because this is our city, it's not their city. And so I feel that it's very important that we protect our citizens' rights to have the floor and not have it be taken over by outside interests, and and so that's, that's the purpose of this.
Further discussion, councilors? Councilor O'Neal?
Yes. I believe it should just stay as allow any resident and not add Gloucester property owner and/or Gloucester business owner. Gloucester property owners and business owners can live in Oregon or any other state in the Union. They don't have to live with the consequences of what happens here, so I will not be supporting this.
Council Nolan?
I believe Council Grow was first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm back to having only eight people on my screen. Okay, you're back. There you are, Council Grow.
Here I am. I'm going to respectfully disagree with Councilor O'Neal. The reason, one of the reasons this was brought forward, I was to understand, is that we represent not only the residents and the voters, but we also represent the stakeholders in this community, and you know, a business owner and a property owner definitely are going to have impacts to them that, that are going to affect them and, and by our decisions, and I I mean, I think this opens up a reasonable amount of communication. I think we had, we had kind of an embarrassing situation, I think, when we had the CFO or the comptroller of Varian Applied Materials, one of our biggest employers, felt that we couldn't let them speak, and yet they had an obvious interest in the legislation that was being discussed, so I think that, that Tony, Council Gross's concerns about the the mass bombing, bombings, the oral communication flooding that comes from special interest groups outside the area is definitely something we need to prevent, you know, work against. But I think anybody who is a, is a stakeholder in Gloucester's future and in her health and well-being should have a right to address the City Council, and I think this does that nicely.
Council Nolan and then Council Majota?
I believe exactly what Tony Gross has put on paper, and I also believe what Jason Grota said. We have stakeholders and taxpayers. A taxpayer is a taxpayer, whether they're a resident or not. They're paying taxes for us to protect them and to watch out for their needs. You have business owners that may own a small business on Main Street, but they live in Rockport, and we've seen this with a tarot card reader, where she had concerns about water, and we weren't allowed to let her speak because she wasn't a resident, but she was a business owner. And businesses do pay taxes, it's separate than real estate taxes, it's a business tax. So, this here allows people that have vested interest in this town to speak of concerns, whether it be water, trash pickup, or anything that may be on their mind. And I think it's about time that we do what Tony Gross has put in front of us and respect everybody that has a plate at the table for paying for all of our services and needs. And I think this is a great change, and I'll be supporting it.
Thank you, Council. Council Majota?
I just want to say I'll be supporting this, and I agree with Council Nolan, Council Grow, and Council Gross. You know, people do make a living, and that's their living, and they should have, they make a living in Gloucester, and they should have the right to state their opinion, so I will be supporting this, and I agree with the previous three councilors, so thank you.
Council Worthley?
Yes, I'll be brief. I support this. I think it is much more inclusive than we have right now. I imagine there's a scenario, this doesn't cover everybody, but the chairperson still has a discretion. Let's say a visitor wants to commend a lifeguard for saving their kid's life. I don't think we're going to say, you can't speak. Maybe we do, but the chairperson, that opportunity, the same thing if the town manager from Rockport wants to talk about Long Beach sewer issues, whatever, I, I think we're going to be open to that. But this gives more people more opportunity to speak, and I 100% support it, and I think that we should as well. Thank you.
Council Memard?
I would just like to echo the comments of the previous four councilors. I will be supporting this.
Council Gilman and then Council O'Neal. Council, I haven't spoken yet, so that's why I'm speaking before you, because you have. So, one of the things that we haven't mentioned that I really do like, that I wanted to mention, was the deletion of the comment that, I can't read it, that the council president shall not talk about performance or character, right? So, that was the way that it, that it used to read before the new ruling on freedom of speech. So, we had discussed deleting that, so I'm glad that you've taken that into account. And I, I absolutely think that this is important for all the reasons that everyone has said. So, Council O'Neal, and then back to Council Nolan, because both of you have your hands up.
Thank you. Thank you. My concern is that this opens up the door for developers to just buy property and I don't know, I just and have a seat at the table and then sell it, you know, build a multifamily complex, sell it, and then get out of town. They don't have to worry about anything. Also, the MBTA owns quite a bit of property here in central Gloucester and west Gloucester, so you know, I just see that being trouble, and it should be at the discretion of the chair for sure. So, I am still opposed to this.
Anyone else? Thank you, Council. Council Nolan, you had had your hand up, and it's not anymore, so we're done. Okay, I think we're ready to to call the question. Council Nolan?
Absolutely. Thank you, Tony.
Council O'Hara? Absent. Council O'Neal?
No.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Grow?
Good ad, yes.
Council Majota?
Yes, and thank you, Tony.
Council Memard?
Yes.
The yeses have it, seven in favor, one opposed, and one absent. Next order of business. Council Nolan?
On a motion by Council Majota, seconded by Council Gross, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted by roll call, two in favor, one opposed, O'Hara. To recommend that the City Council amend, the City Council Rules of Procedure 22 as follows. Rule number four, public hearings. C. Presentations from proponents. Delete. In matters related to special permits, petitioners, add. Petitioners may make initial oral presentations up to fifteen minutes. Others speaking in favor shall be allowed up to three minutes each.
My apologies. Can we, can we move the screen up so we can see what you're reading? My apologies for interrupting.
Thank you. Thank you, Joanne.
Okay, we ready? Proponents are required by open meeting law to enter into the record documentation of their presentation testimony. For public hearings, considering general matters, each individual may speak up to three minutes. Add. Speaker shall be a Gloucester resident and/or Gloucester property owner and/or Gloucester business owner or their authorized representative. D. Presentation from opponents. Opponents shall be allowed initial oral presentations up to fifteen minutes. Others speaking in opposition shall be allowed up to three minutes each. Opponents are also required by open meeting law to enter into the record documentation of their testimony. Add. Speaker shall be a Gloucester resident and/or Gloucester property owner and/or Gloucester business owner or their authorized representative, and I so move.
Nolan made the motion, I think it was Council Grow, and there was a big squeaky sound. So, discussion on the motion, councilors?
You want me to speak first?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you, Council Gross.
So, for the same reasons that I spoke of earlier, I think that, you know, this is for for our constituents who are all stakeholders in Gloucester. And also in the public hearing, you may have, you know, an attorney for either side who does not reside here, who is representing, and, and I know that you know, oppositions have been organized and have hired attorneys who have opposed certain developments and stuff. And the first part, I changed in matters relating to special permits to just petitioners, because we have matters that are not just special permits, so that we discuss, so I thought that that would be helpful, that we didn't just, you know, pigeonhole ourselves into the special permits in this language. So, that's, you know, I already made my points about the the residents and the property owners and the business owners and their authorized representatives on both sides. And the reason for the other part is because I've, we have petitioners for other things besides special permits.
Thank you. Council Worthley?
Yes, I like what Council Gross has done here, but I'd like to make a minor amendment for discussion. In both cases where, I move that in both cases where we have and/or before Gloucester business owner, I'd like to delete that. And then after Gloucester business owner, add in and/or nonprofit organization and the rest, or their authorized representative. So, that would be if the food pantry director lived outside of Gloucester, he or she could speak. If the Chamber of Commerce director lived outside of Gloucester, he or she could speak. And so it covers just one more category, but I think it's a critical one. I started the group Sea Arts, and the director is from Gloucester, but that could be someone who lives in Essex or Rockport, so I just want to add that piece in. So, I make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Is there a discussion on Council Worthley? Um, is there a discussion on, um, Counsel Worthy? Do you, do you want to say anything more other than what you just said?
I think I've said it.
Okay. Um, on the, um, amendment, um, Counselor Nolan and then Counsel O'Neil.
Um, the, the amendment's not that big of a deal, but, um. As far as a nonprofit, they're, they're a business, um, that's registered with the city of Gloucester. So it'd still be covered, but, um, I, I don't mind adding the word nonprofit to this as well. So either way, I'll, I'll support the amendment. Thank you.
Um, Counsel Grow.
Yeah, I, I agree with Counsel Nolan. I mean, they are technically businesses and, and I think they would be, we would recognize them as such anyway. Uh, but again, it's not that big a deal to add another category.
Counselors, anyone else? I'd like to discuss this. Seeing none, uh, roll call vote, Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara, absent. Counsel O'Neil.
Yes.
Counsel Worthy.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yeah.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Yes, as have it. Eight in favor, one absent. Okay, we're making some good progress. Um, next order of business, Counsel Nolan.
We still have the main motion on the table.
Shoot. Okay, thank you. So, um, the, the amendment was, um, was approved. And now we're back to the main motion. Any discussion on the main motion? Counsel O'Neil's hand, hand is raised.
You're muted.
Tracy, your, um, Counsel O'Neil, you are muted.
Can you go on? Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that. I'm noticing that, um, there is a sentence in. Presentations from proponents that is not in the presentation from oppo- opponents. And that's, um, one, two, three, fourth line down. For public hearings, considering general matters, each individual may speak up to three minutes. So that was added up above, but not into the opponents. So I would like to, um, make a motion to amend. D. To add for public hearings, considering general matters, each individual may speak up to three minutes and I so move.
Second.
Thank you.
If I may, if I may, that was not.
I, I don't see that. I, I see.
Not in the amendment. That's in the original language. So. We're not discussing that at this particular time, I guess, because that's not in the amendment. What's in black is not in the amendment.
So we can't add what's, what's, we can't add that into the opponent's side to make it?
Yeah, sure she could.
Fair?
Well, it wouldn't be an amendment to the amendment. It would be your own separate amendment.
Right. That's fine.
That's what I thought it was doing. No?
So, um.
Oh, I would have to do it like in a, at another, um, meeting.
I guess, I guess I'm, I'm a little confused because we're on rule number four. And I see three minutes on section C in the black. Three minutes each. And then in section D, I also, I also see. Opposition shall be allowed up to three minutes each. So I see three minutes in both, uh, both parts. So what, what? What is it that is missing? I'm not sure.
Three minutes is mentioned twice in the proponents. It's line. One, two, three, four, three quarters of the way across the page. And it starts for public hearings, considering general matters, each individual may speak up to three minutes. That additional sentence is not in D.
Good catch.
So I'm wondering if we should just eliminate that in, in general and just make it less verbose in the, in the first one. Is that just as easy? Because we, we mentioned it twice. I don't know why we need to mention it twice, twice.
I'm sure.
Yes.
I would argue that, I would, I would argue, I'm sorry, I don't know if I'm recognized.
Um, go ahead. You have the floor, Counselor.
I, I think if you remove it, what you're, because the public hearings that are due for general ordinance changes, things like that, don't necessarily require a fifteen minute, uh, presentation. Uh, on either side. And I think that what we're saying is, is that she's just, she just wants to make the, the language, uh. Line up with each one so that for public hearings, considering general matters, each individual may speak up to three minutes. In opposition as well. I don't, I don't personally see a problem with adding that language. It just, it just equalizes the two paragraphs and, and. The, the only thing I would say in addition to that, if I, while I've got everybody's attention is that. Should we go back to the, the, uh, the issue of public comment and add the nonprofit language in there? I don't think we necessarily have to, but it, it is inconsistent. Did I just make more questions? Sorry.
Um, Counsel Worthy.
Yes, um, good point, Counsel Grow. But I actually, when I made my motion, I said in both instances, it says and/or and replace it. So I was trying to capture both. And we voted for that. I don't, I don't know.
No, I, I meant the oral communications.
Oh.
Yeah, that, it doesn't matter. I don't think we should bother with it, frankly.
So, so Counsel O'Neil, um, has made an amendment that she would like to add. For public hearings, considering general matters, each individual may speak up to three minutes to item D. Is that correct, Counsel O'Neil?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. And I forget, did we get a second on that? I got a little distracted. Okay, so we, we have a motion, we have a second. Um, so, uh, further discussion, counselors. Um, seeing none.
Are we voting on my amendment?
No, right now we're on Tracy's amendment to.
Oh, that's a separate amendment, not an amendment to my amendment.
Well, it's, it's kind of to your amendment because it's in the same.
Well, I think the reason that it's there, if we're up for discussion here on this. Is because, because of the language that was deleted. In matters relating to special permits. And so then they added for public hearings, considered general matters. So I would recommend that we take it out if that's what Tracy wants to do is just take it out rather than. Yeah. The reason it's there is because of the language that's been deleted. So if anything, we should take it out.
Fine.
I see what you mean because the delete at the beginning, you're making it general, um, to petitions. So you're, you're covering both. With that word. So there's, so it is redundant. Because you're, you're covering, you're already saying. It also includes for public hearings, considering general matters. So I, I agree with, uh, Counsel Gross. I think that's the. That's the right way to go. Um, Counsel Neil, do you understand what, um?
Yes. Yep. So should I withdraw by, is that what?
So, yeah, I think if you, if you agree with us, yeah. So without objection, just, yeah.
And, but, but, procedural question. So we're, we're going to vote Tony's amendment as, as a whole, and then we're going to make a separate motion to remove for public hearings, considering general matters. So it's a two-step process. Is that correct?
Sounds like a plan.
Okay. All right. So, um, so we're back. We've added the nonprofit, um, with, with Counsel Worthy. Um, we added that in. We approved that and now, um, Counselor O'Neil has withdrawn her motion. And, um, so. Counselor, um, Nolan, do you want to amend? Do you want to just review what it is we're voting on before we vote it? Just to make sure everybody's clear.
I, I think it is clear. We're, you want to vote the original motion and then we're going to go back. And we are gonna, uh, change up and remove on section C. In, in amendment to the vote that we're going to take right now.
Okay. So is everyone clear on what we're, um. What the amendment, oh, what the, what we're voting. Okay. Um, roll call vote, Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara is absent. Counsel O'Neil. Um, you are muted, Counselor.
So, um, sorry. We're voting on the original amendment. I'm sorry.
Yeah, and then we're going to go back to yours.
Okay, so no.
Okay. Um, Counsel Worthy.
Yes.
Uh, Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
The yeses have it, seven in favor, one opposed and one absent. Um, so now for the, um, for the next motion. Um, Counsel O'Neil, do you want to make that or would you like Counsel Nolan to make it?
I can make it. Um. I moves that. The sentence for public hearings, considering general matters, each individual may speak up to three minutes. Be me, be removed from rule number four, paragraph C. And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel O'Neil, seconded by Counselor, I think it was Memard. Um, is there a discussion? Counsel Gross, your hand is raised.
Is, um, I would like to thank Counsel O'Neil for bringing that up. I'm sorry that I did not catch that when I deleted the first part and saw the relationship that it had with it. So. I'm sorry to add on another ten minutes to this discussion. Thank you, Counselor O'Neil.
Thank you, Counsel Gross.
Um, any other discussion? Seeing none, uh, roll call vote, Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara, absent. Counsel O'Neil.
Yes.
Counsel Worthy.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
The yeses have it. Eight in favor, one absent. Good job. And we're still smiling through all this. I know it's tedious. Particularly on Zoom to have a governance meeting on Zoom. It was so much nicer when we were at the Harvard Masters office, having our governance meeting. In a square where we could just talk about it. So much easier, nicer. Okay, enough, enough about. My comments. Um, next order of business, Counsel Nolan. Counsel Nolan, you are muted. Sorry.
On a motion by Counsel Majota, seconded by Counsel Gross, the ordinance administration committee voted by roll call, three in favor. Zero opposed to recommend that the city council amend, the city council rules of procedure two thousand twenty-two as follows. Rule number nine, vacancy in a council position in filing, filling the same. Procedures for filling the city council seat left vacant by death, resignation or removal. From office, office of the city counselor or removal from city, the city. Shall be forwarded, followed when a candidate to fill the vacancy is not available pursuant to section two dash thirteen. Of the city charter as follows. The chair shall delete publicly, add publicly. Announce the following procedures, impose them as part of the agenda of the meeting at which the vacancy is to be filled and I so move. Second.
Counselor Nolan made the motion, it was seconded by Counsel O'Neil. This is just a typo change. Good catch, Counsel Gross. Um, any discussion on this? Seeing none, roll call vote, Counselor, um, Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara, absent. Counsel O'Neil.
Yes.
Counsel Worthy.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Publicly, yes.
The yeses have it, eight in favor, one absent. Next order of business, Counsel Nolan.
On a motion by Counsel Majota, seconded by Counsel Gross. The ordinance administration committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed. To recommend that the city council amend, the city council rules of procedure two thousand twenty-two as follows. Rule ten, procedure for selecting an interim mayor. Four, candidates for the interim mayor shall delete. Be allowed to make, add, make up to a five-minute presentation prior to the city council vote. Counselors may ask questions of the candidates following the presentations and I so move.
Second. Um, motion made by Counsel Nolan, seconded by Counsel Worthy. Is there a discussion?
Yep.
Counsel Gross. Oh, sorry, your amendment. I'm sorry.
All right. So, um, you know, this was. Um, wrecking back to the last time the council, um, selected a mayor, there was no discussion at all, um, because it was optional. I don't feel that served the citizens, um, at all. Um, I think that, that anyone who was running to be, you know. The head of, to be the mayor of this city should have to at least explain why they feel they deserve to be the head. So. Um, I thought that it shouldn't be optional and that's why I made this change.
I thought it was obvious.
Well, the last time it was done, there was not a single question asked.
Um, good point. Um. So any further discussion, counselors? Uh, Counsel Worthy.
Yes, I'm going to support it for all the right reasons. If we're looking at spelling mistakes, are we doing counselors with one L or two Ls? Do we deal with that separately?
That's next.
Because it's on this one too, and the one prior to it, actually.
The next motion.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry. Sorry. Um, I want to support this for the same reasons Counsel Gross mentioned and. Same thing happened nineteen ninety-one. There was a little more discussion because it went round and round, around, around for a while, but there still was a lot of behind the scenes. Wheeling and dealing for council votes. Um, yes, I was thirteen years old and paying attention then stupidly or whatever, but, um. Yeah, nineteen ninety-one happened in two thousand and eight or whenever the last time it happened. Um. So I think this should, this should be a presentation made by any counselor that wants to be mayor. Thank you, Counsel Gross.
Any further discussion, counselors? Seeing none, our roll call vote, Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara, absent. Counselor O'Neil.
Yes.
Counsel Worthy.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes, and I swear I won't run for mayor after you appoint me.
Um, eight in favor, um, one absent. Thank you. Next order of business, Counsel Nolan.
On a motion by Counsel Majota, seconded by Counsel Gross, the ordinance administration committee voted by roll call. Three in favor, zero opposed to recommend.
You're muted now.
Counsel Nolan, you became muted, just as you said, to recommend. Now you're back.
Alrighty, so we're going to go back to the city council amend, the city council rules of procedure. Two thousand twenty-two by deleting Counselor with two Ls and adding Counselor with one L. And I so move.
Um, motion made by Counsel Nolan, I think it was Counsel Grow that seconded. Um, is there a discussion?
L with counselors.
Seeing none, our roll call vote, Counsel Nolan.
Absolutely.
Counsel O'Hara, absent. Counsel O'Neil.
Yes.
Counsel Worthy.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Going to be a great time saver, yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Linda Lowe liked the English spelling, but I'll go with the American.
So you're, you're giving us a yes. So eight in favor, one absent. Um, I think that's it, right?
Motion to adjourn.
I don't know who made the, the motion, but I know Counsel Gross seconded, so.
I did. On, on the motion to adjourn.
Let's discuss it.
I'm going to bust the rules and remind people of the open door event coming up on Thursday. You gotta go. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you.
What time is that?
It's the, it's, it's the open, it's the empty bowl, but it's slightly different. But it's, it's uh on location at the Seaport, um, like it used to, Seaport, sorry, uh, like it used to be.
Not a drive-through.
It's not a drive.
Check out the website.
Thank you. Awesome, thank you.
I think it's unfair lobbying on behalf of that, that cause, like two, two counselors. I have no idea what you're talking about.
You're just, you all wanna just stay on the call because we're finally like.
We finally accomplished something.
Right, so we have a motion to adjourn, seconded by Counsel Gross.
And we'll see you, see you all tomorrow morning.
Last time, before we, before we adjourn, thank you, um, Joanne Sinos. Awesome job. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
Counsel Nolan, to adjourn.
Yes, thank you.
Counsel O'Neil?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Just definitely.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memard?
Until the morning.
We are adjourned. Awesome. Thank you, everybody. We got through it. We got through a lot tonight. Thank you.
Bye-bye.